Please rise. The May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Liz Danielson presiding.
Please be seated. Good morning, everyone. I've got a couple of comments to make this morning at the risk of repeating myself. With respect to the proposed imminent closure of Triple H S's Minden Emergency Department, I'd like to state clearly that not one member of this county council was pleased to hear Triple H S's unanticipated announcement. We're also in full agreement that the planned closure or consolidation of E R's was communicated extremely poorly and with a lack of solid planning in place. Having said that, we're also fully aware that the decision was within Triple H S's legal purview to make. And despite both county and Minden Hills councils' repeated requests for delay to allow for more careful and consultative planning to take place, those requests have all been turned down. Since that time, various community individuals and representatives have made valiant efforts to turn this decision around, and many of those efforts are to be applauded. However, things have gotten very much out of hand in other areas. The amount of misleading information and rumors being spread does nothing but fuel the flames of fear and frustration. Personal attacks on individuals are completely unacceptable, and the continuing vitriol that fills social media pages is shameful. None of this moves the needle towards resolving this unfortunate situation and appears to be tearing the county apart, and I believe that we're better than that. We need to stand together as best we can to ensure that the Halliburton Highlands continues to be the wonderful place where we have chosen to live and it remains a safe place where reasonable healthcare services can be provided. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty Nishisoging territory and in the traditional territory of the Nishisoging and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaty's First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda today? Councillors Carter and Ferry.
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Ferry. Be resolved that the May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three Halliburton County Council agenda be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Hearing none? Could I have a mover in a second or two to the minutes of April twenty six, twenty seventh, May tenth, and sixteenth? Councillor Shell? And Ryle?
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Ryle. Be resolved that the minutes from the following meetings of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated. April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three regular council meeting, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three special meeting of council, May tenth, two thousand twenty three special meeting of council, and the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty three special meeting of council.
All in favor? That's carried. Next, we have delegations, and we're pleased to welcome Stephanie McLaren, Executive Director of the Coortle Lakes Ontario Health Team. Good morning.
Stephanie, your microphone.
Clever. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Warden, and to the members of council for the opportunity to speak to you today about the work to date of the Coortle Lakes Ontario Health Team. I look forward to getting to the path forward and welcoming the county as members of Coortle Lakes, soon to be renamed Coortle Lakes Halliburton, I hope, Ontario Health Team. So I'll start with an overview of what is an Ontario Health Team. So next slide, please. So we are one of currently fifty four designated Ontario Health Teams across the province. We are a group, a collaboration of healthcare providers and organizations working alongside family and caregiver members towards a common goal of improving health outcomes. We exist in the newly formed Ontario East Region and are one of thirteen Ontario Health Teams in this region, and that is the three former Linds of Champlain, Southeast and Central East, all combined into one region. Next slide, please. So what is an O H T? At maturity, O H Ts will be clinically and fiscally responsible for providing a full continuum of care for a defined population. This comes from a document released November twenty twenty two by Ontario Health. Our vision of locally connected care is enabled by improvements in transitions in care, the ability to provide care in the right setting, the right time, by the right provider, enhancing the ability of providers and patients to access health information through a single shared record, integrating and standardizing pathways and models where appropriate, and understanding the local complexities through an equity-oriented lens. We are also accountable for the provision of twenty four seven navigation supports to increase access and awareness to the public about available supports and services. And our overall purpose is to have a relentless focus on supporting people to live their healthiest lives possible. This is a vision that I will very earnestly say is being shaped iteratively with ongoing input and framing from Ontario Health and the collaborative tables in which we participate. And I make that point specifically because you'll see in the early days of formation, we were largely about collectively, both locally and provincially, planning and gaining a deeper understanding of what's possible and what is expected from us by Ontario Health, and you'll hear more of that as I move through this presentation. Next slide, please. So who we are, this is an editorial choice. This is who we are in terms of current signed members, signed members. I say that only because we are hoping and intending that the health service providers in Halliburton County will be swiftly onboarding and joining us in this journey as we work to improve access to services particularly in the community. So members of the O H T function at the governance level, while partners are variously involved in working groups. Organizations can only be governance members of one Ontario Health Team, but can be partners in multiple Ontario Health Teams. So you see, for example, regional organizations such as Canadian Mental Health Association, H K P R, sits at multiple O H T tables but is a governance member of only one. Home and Community Care Support Services are formerly known as Central East Lynn Home and Community Care, formerly known as C C A C, are at our table as active participants, not signed partners. They work with us and various on the operations committee as well as various working groups as appropriate. Ross Memorial Hospital is the host agency who operates as a flow-through for the Ontario Health Team. It's worth noting that O H Ts are not permitted to fund services directly. Funds received to date are to support the planning and implementation team. In addition to this, that in itself tends to be one year to eighteen months of funding at a time. And we have had access over the last two years to a one-time annual funding for implementation of things like remote care monitoring for our community paramedicine program, as well as online appointment booking, just as two examples. We have, you'll note, a funny population metric, fifty three thousand seven hundred and thirty seven people receiving healthcare services. This is what they refer to as the attribution model, and this is a number that's meant to capture, it's an algorithmically based number that first associates a patient to a physician. And then if there's not a connection to primary care, that physician is first of all allocated to a particular Ontario Health Team based on referral patterns. And then if they are, then if there's no primary care connection, then it's the patient is allocated or individual is based allocated based on access to hospital services. So you'll notice it's lower than the population rate, and that's likely due to an attachment as well as people seeking services outside of the O H T. We have, as I say, thirteen organizations, seven very active P F A C, Patient Family Advisory Committee members, and lived experience partners, depending on the nature of the project that we're working on. We have specific primary care providers that are members, assigned members through the family health organization as well as by association with their employer being part of the O H T. Forty-three physicians and nineteen nurse practitioners currently. Next slide, please. This is the operational org chart, loosely similar to a board structure, an executive director, I report to the members as a collaborative council and have a very small nimble staff team to implement and operationalize the strategic directions as defined by the collaborative table. Next slide, please. Quintuple aim defines all of the work that we do. Those of us that have been in healthcare have watched this merge over the years from a triple aim to a quadruple aim, and now with the addition of better equitable access to care, we are welcoming the quintuple aim as the pillars of the work, foundational pillars of the work that we do. And we see this quintuple aim, which is focused on better provider experience, better value and efficiency, better patient population health outcomes, and better patient caregiver experience, being driven by key components of what we describe as an integrated care system. We can switch to the next slide, please. So facilitators of integrated care, it's kind of got a dual meaning in the sense that these are necessary drivers to create a system of integrated care. And as the O H T, we see ourselves also as, you know, becoming facilitators of integrated care, that these are the pieces that we are working really hard to improve in the region that we support. So we see many definitions of integrated care at play in the healthcare system, but what they all have in common are coordination between and among care teams across care settings. A single care plan and often a single shared record across that continuum of care. Seamless access to the right provider at the right time and the right place. A high degree of communication and digitization to support real-time communication and coordination. The utilization of a person-centered equity-informed lens to ensure that services are relevant to the patient and family, and this includes consideration of ethno-cultural specificity, income, literacy, mental health, rurality, et cetera. And this is where integrated care starts to happen in the wild, I like to say, and become highly contextual. We're taking the conversation beyond traditional healthcare and broadening it to be inclusive of context as well as fostering linkages between health and social services, for example. But we cannot boil the proverbial ocean. This is a heavy lift to build these components out in our current system. So we need to take chunks out of the work, start somewhere and continuously increase capacity around this whole wheel of components. Next slide, please. And we have done so through our organizational structure. As I mentioned before, we have the very active and engaged Patient Family Advisory Council who worked to improve the patient, give us patient and family insights on how we can better improve the system. They were extremely active in the twenty twenty two public engagement process we did in the city of Coortle Lakes, trying to shape and understand what matters to the community. We have an operating committee which collaborates to advance the strategic initiatives as defined by the Oversight Committee, which guides the work of working groups as appropriate. Oversight Committee, as I stated, is a collaborative governance committee, very much focused on ensuring that our O H T is working towards the key deliverables defined by Ontario Health. We have a Chairs Council, which oversees the evolving model of governance and expansion and sustainability. This is comprised of typically board chairs as well as accompanied by their senior administrative staff. In terms of working groups, and this is where the, I would say, where the, next slide, please. This is where the work really happens. We have an integrated care working group, which has been identifying key change initiatives to advance standardized integrated care for congestive heart failure and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease initially, optimizing existing resources and preparing for future investments we are hopeful will come our way through Ontario Health. We have a care navigation working group, which has developed a navigation plan in partnership with other committees and is working to advance the system of twenty four seven navigation services, warm transitions, and no wrong door approach to service access. The Digital Health Working Group has been very active, conducting a current state assessment across all of the entire continuum of care from primary care to hospital to community paramedicine, for example, identifying areas where we can strengthen the ability for these service providers to communicate more effectively and to be able to extract data from systems that can drive relevant improvements through that equity-informed lens that I spoke of earlier. An engagement working group, which worked very active, was very active last year in terms of the public engagement process. We will now be working in the next year to deepen that process, as I'll speak to in a moment. We did so under the the veil of Omicron, so some of our strategies need to be a little more face-to-face with the community as opposed to through virtual mediums and surveys. And we have an unattached patient working group, similar, I know, in Halliburton. It's a big concern in the city of Coortle Lakes has been the availability of primary care and the access to primary care as that primary care is truly the foundation of a successful system of integrated care. And how can we more effectively optimize the primary care that we have in the system and always be working towards increasing that? So I will speak a bit about the community engagement plan in the next slide, please. So the overall objectives of our community engagement process were to provide information about how healthcare is currently provided in the community. It's a bit of a mystery, a bit of a black hole sometimes trying to navigate healthcare services, as I'm sure many of us have experienced. So what are the gaps and opportunities and what the process of how to change? How do we engage community, patients, clients, families, and caregivers in this realization of this plan? So that's the informed part of the continuum. We also aim to create opportunities where residents can provide input into improving performance across a range of outcomes linked to the quintuple aim. And we want to provide an opportunity for dialogue that encourages thoughtful consideration of the person and family caregiver-centered care through holistic, equitable, and inclusive approach. And the input gathered through our engagement process certainly informs mightily the work as we move forward. Next slide, please. So as I said, in twenty twenty two, early, mostly February and March of twenty twenty two, we engaged in what matters to your health, a conversation with the community. And as I said before, this was under the veil of Omicron, so we had tremendous support from the municipality to use their Jumpin' Coortle Lakes platform and reach over five hundred people through an online survey. We made that survey available in paper format at many organizations that serve vulnerable members of our community. We made telephone numbers available for to complete over the phone with a member of our staff team, but certainly it's not an adequate dive into the challenges and those contextual pieces of equity. So that will be deepened over the next year. We also had online town halls, forums, focus groups, had six of them. And we got extremely valuable information. I would say overwhelmingly, the focus was on primary care and concerns around what's happening in the primary care sector with pending retirements and the challenge of recruiting new physicians to communities in rural areas, and very much defined as a community crisis. The availability of home care also was identified in tandem with primary care. Secondarily, it was navigable and accessible access or community services, again, knowing who to call, when, for what, or how to approach service providers and who does what. And then mental health and addiction support and the availability of those services. Next slide, please. We similarly surveyed health service providers across a broad continuum from hospitals, primary care. And we were able to hear from over forty service providers in those care settings. We heard that the availability, some very similar feedback with the availability and reliability of home care being number one. Secondary to that was primary care, including in-person services, and recognizing this was during the virtual pivot. So that was a big concern for a lot of people, that their physicians would be available to them in person after COVID. Addressing intersections such as seniors or low-income families with mental health and addictions, the ability of patients, families, and health service providers to navigate the system, and the ability of clinicians and service providers to communicate and have that electronic medical record integration through a shared record or some kind of system that would allow them to do that. Next slide, please. I apologize, I'm going quite quickly. Got a lot to talk about. The first, the first T P A deliverables, that's a transfer payment agreement. This was for the period of June twenty twenty one to October twenty twenty two. We were asked to define a priority population as part of this work, and the K L O H T defined older adults living in community with multiple comorbidities and/or social determinants of health as the priority population. What we did with that first year and a bit of funding is we implemented a community paramedicine remote care monitoring program and with a strong focus on congestive heart failure and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, created a digital health strategy roadmap, understanding current states, gaps, and opportunities. We designed and implemented a virtual wellness connections program, which was redesigned, a redesign of a program that was created to support the virtual pivot for older adults, I would say, to ensure that as services and healthcare shifted to virtual, that the members of the community who didn't have digital devices or connectivity were not being left behind. We then took the enthusiasm for that program and created a support program around the Avoid Frailty Framework, which is really a health promotion and wellness program aimed at seniors and older adults, encouraging them with strategies, local, in-person, and virtual to maintain wellness. We did the engagement process, as I spoke about. We also did a partner, received funding through the province for the provincial health service navigation. We did a current state assessment of an inventory of existing programs and services and looked at what the gaps were with respect to access and navigation and created an implementation plan, which we are doing this year. We implemented online appointment booking in primary care settings. We created our very first quality improvement plan, collaborative quality improvement plan, and we had a very strong focus on a population health management approach, which is how we landed initially on C H F and C O P D. Next slide, please. And now we have received further direction from Ontario Health and the Ministry of Health in terms of what O H Ts across the province are to focus on. And we were in good measure, we were very much in alignment with these newly stated directions, and I categorized them into three buckets, which is advancing integrated care through the creation of standardized pathways for C H F, C O P D, diabetes, palliative care, mental health, and addictions. And our integrated care working group has begun this work, as I said, with C H F. We have added a focus on palliative care very early this year as a result of early stakeholder consultation with respect to the chronic disease management pathways. Mental health and addictions is being addressed through our quality improvement work. We're at early stages of local data analysis in this piece, and we are including the sector in our navigation platform work. We have a recognized need, as I said, to expand planning through an equity, diversity, and inclusion lens, which will occur over the next year through the creation and implementation of an E D I plan. And we will continue increasing the involvement of lived experience partners in all planning activities. Also focusing on enhanced pathways for unattached patients and preventative cancer screening has been a priority for us. We are advancing digital health maturity, both for providers and the public. We've launched our first iteration of the O H T navigation platform, beginning with the focus on older services and programs supporting older adults, also on attached patients, mental health and addictions. Child and youth services and developmental services are incrementally being onboarded with an anticipated completion in July of this year. We have included Halliburton service providers variously along this journey for navigation. We did conduct a feasibility study to explore the potential of one record shared across multiple care settings, beginning with the Central East Hospital Cluster in primary care. And we are beginning planning for coordinated access to virtual specialty care. And I will highlight this one because I know it did appear, in addition to navigation, access to specialty, virtual specialty care did appear in the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan for Halliburton County, if I recall. So this is certainly a shared, shared direction across most rural communities. And it actually came to us via a direct recommendation from our Patient Family and Advisory Committee, who formally made a statement that they'd like to see a clear strategy in our O H T to equitably increase access to appropriate services in this respect. The provincial OTN system, which you may be familiar with, is currently being reimagined by the province after the COVID virtual pivot. And we are partnering with regional and provincial stakeholders to see how we can best optimize this in our communities. And we are working regionally, provincially, on the creation of a patient portal for increasing access to one's own health information across multiple care settings. Increasing primary care engagement, the third bucket, it will be an ongoing forever activity. Much engagement has been done through the creation of our digital health roadmap. And this year, we will be exploring the potential benefits of a primary care network or a collaborative of primary care providers to organize and support the voice of primary care at our O H T table and more broadly, and ensure access to the multiple centralized supports that are available for primary care practices to enhance the work. Next slide, please. We have three system performance indicators for which we are accountable regularly to Ontario Health now. We have started with the hospital readmission rate within thirty days post-discharge for selected conditions. These are typically what are known as ambulatory sensitive conditions or conditions that could be best managed elsewhere, meaning the community. I didn't go into the exhaustive slide here, or metrics here, but we have seen a very dramatic increase, improvement in this particular target with local data for Ross Memorial Hospital with the inclusion of community paramedicine remote care monitoring to the program offerings in the community. We've just added patients receiving palliative home care in the last ninety days of life as a performance measure. And we have created a key, a driver diagram of key enablers to ensure that people are attached at an early stage as appropriate to palliative care. And we will be working with various partners to increase the access to palliative care in our community, which I know home care availability can often be a rate-limiting piece of this, and I do hope that we will have the engagement of home and community care to be able to think of new models for rural communities to improve access to home care. It's certainly not one, a challenge that is ours alone. It is definitely shared across rural geographies. And the third system performance indicator is the ability to request an appointment through a website portal or application. This specifically speaks to our online appointment booking initiative. Next slide. We also have mandatory collaborative quality improvement indicators. These are very much COVID recovery metrics, trying to rebalance some of the backlogs in the system. So we see the first one. The first two indicators are really focused on improving access to care in the most appropriate setting, so that is increased alternate level of care, which is a hospital metric for individuals who could be managed better at home. We have a very low A L C rate locally, so we have taken an upstream approach, and that's our frailty screening initiative, the virtual wellness connections program, and the implementation of the palliative care direction. In terms of increasing overall access In terms of increasing access, overall access to community, mental health and addiction services. Uh, we are, we've done a deep dive into local data in terms of emergency presentations. And have some change initiatives that are emerging that are specific to referral and ongoing follow-up. And then the cancer screening uh, preventative care, we've had a very strong focus on how we are. Marketing, so to speak, or outreach into patients that are unattached to primary care and how they can access these services. Next slide, please. So I had a rather, I've already spoken about the value of digital health and I provided a bit of a laundry list, I would say, of. Initiatives that we have, we are currently undertaking with, to improve our digital health maturity. I won't go through them, most of them I have already gone through. Next slide, please. And I would just highlight this wellness connections program, it was incubated by the Ontario Health Team staff, it has now been adopted. By community support services, both in City of Corel, the Lakes, at Community Care, uh, C K L, as well as. Triple H S Community Support Services is in the process of embedding this in existing workflows and staff team functions. And welcome, I encourage you to take a tour, the link is provided. And similarly, next slide, please. The Corel Lakes Ontario Health Team Navigation Platform, so this is built to support public awareness and access to community support services, community supports and services. Uh, many programs are utilizing a self-referral platform that is functional through a care of, which is built into our, our site. It allows organizations to forward referrals to other agencies as well through P I P A compliant uh, platform. And Ocean and Chris are, Ocean is the e-referral system that's being integrated across the hospital sector. Uh, in the province as well, or in the region as well as in primary care, so primary care providers will be. With one click, will be able to refer their patients on to relevant programs and support services in the community easily. Kind of an ask the facts initiative. Um, and Chris is the Home and Community Care Support Services Platform. And I think that is, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions for Stephanie? Also Carter.
First of all, let me applaud you and what you've done so far. And um, in particular, in. Choosing what to work on in terms of priorities, I mean, the, the adage of how do you eat an elephant has got to. You know, play a big role here. And trying to just understand healthcare um, in, in our provinces is, is a daunting task. Uh, three questions, if I could. There's probably a hundred questions, but the, but the, you know, I, those are really for you to figure out. One of the things on the, you know, the what is an O H T? The original concepts of the, of when they first came out and started talking about this. Intended to look at maybe larger populations. And so, you know, you had the quote here of the maturity. Uh, maturity, the, you know, you'll be able to provide a full continuum of care. Obviously, within our area, we don't have all of the specialists or the surgeries or, or whatever, so. A, is the thinking changed, or do you think that, you know, are these going to evolve, or what do you think the future looks like?
So not that I have a direct. Insight into what Ontario Health or the Ministry of Health is, is, is designing. But there's been no indication, most O H Ts, with the exception of large urban centers, are in the same position where we don't have the large tertiary care centers. Uh, in our communities, so there's, there's a recognition, encouragement um, to partner with those uh. Tertiary care centers, so if I look at C H F, for example. And we, we, as we can improve the processes from discharge from our own local hospitals, but there are some patients that are going to need. Much more advanced care than we have available. And so we partner, we're starting that conversation now with how do we partner with Lakewood and their, their C H F clinic, for example. A lot, virtual is helping us a lot with that, and the expectation is always from Ontario Health that we do look at opportunities to. Partner across the continuum, there's no expectation that we have everything at this point in the journey, there's everything in house in one O H T.
Okay, so go ahead.
So the, the next one was on the, um, when you, that your slide on the facilitators of integrated care. And the um, you know, talking about all those different factors. Where's public health in this? Like, where's the health unit? Because there seems to be, you know, large overlaps. Here in, in what, you know, you were, you were doing like social determinants of health and so on.
Yep.
So forth, so how are they fitting in and are they fitting in and, and is there a way to make them fit in?
Yes, and that was, I believe, a line that I skipped over in my notes, uh, they are very active with us in our O H T. Uh, they're a member of our operating committee. They um, have been very active in our cancer screening initiatives, obviously. Tremendous partner and, and of great value to, to us as, in the work of our O H T, so yes, we're, we're. Hand in glove and it's a relationship that could always be strengthened.
Okay, good to hear. And then my last one was on the, as an example, your, your K P I on hospital readmissions. You know, one of the issues, and I, it's, it's, it's probably big in City Corel Lakes, it's probably even larger here. Is the fact that we have very limited resources uh, for home care. And um, and the main issue with it is uh, lack of frontline staff.
Yes.
Um, which is a problem, obviously everywhere, but. I guess, is there a role for you to play, or what is the role that you would be playing in acquiring that frontline staff?
Yes, so I have some insight from working at, at Triple H S and having oversight of our, the supportive housing and assisted living programs. Where there is very low turnover um, in staff and I, what you. Because there was consistent stable employment. And I do believe, and I've had many conversations across the province with other rural communities, that that will be the key. Uh, for a successful home care in rural communities is the ability to provide guaranteed shifted. Schedules, not, uh, right now it's a transactional model where a nurse, a nurse or a P S W is paid per visit. And there's a lot of travel time in between those visits in a geography as large as ours. But if you created a hub model, and this is me in my platform, but you created a hub model. In smaller communities where you had two, two P S Ws serving. The, the geography and a radius around that hub and consistently gave them, you know, steady, reliable. Living wage employment, I think we'd be much more successful in being able to attract health service providers to home care.
I agree, thank you.
Any questions?
I have a comment, but.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just would like to say that um, I participated in the process that Carolyn outlined, Carolyn Plummer, a couple of months ago here. Interviewing the various health teams around us as we decided which one was, we would recommend that we would join. I can't say enough about how welcoming Corel Lakes was, they were, uh, we were so impressed. Uh, with, with their understanding of our community, their, their programs that they've been doing. And, and I, it was no small thing that, uh, you know, their executive director was uh, so involved in Halliburton County before and, and. Um, even in the development of our community safety and wellbeing plan, Stephanie was very involved in that and. And, and you know, I, I think it's really telling, she didn't, when she took on her new role uh, in Corel Lakes, she didn't lose contact. She stayed in contact with us about our community safety and wellbeing plan. She really genu- genuinely cares about this community, so um, I, I just wanted to say, you know. They were, they were incredible as we, as we did this process that took long, a fairly long time. Um, they were very patient, but, but incredibly welcoming and, and just so council is aware of next steps. We would be bringing the partnership documents, the draft partnership documents to council. To, for review in two weeks, uh, at the committee of the whole meeting in June. And then should they be acceptable to council, then we would be bringing the bylaw in, at the June council meeting. Uh, for council to review, that's sort of the process that we envision.
Well, we certainly appreciate that ongoing connection that, that you've provided, it, it makes things a lot more streamlined. Um, one question I've gotten, and maybe this is too simple, but. When it comes to membership, that the Halliburton County would become a member. Um, would, would you be a separate membership for Triple H S? Or would that be like a consolidated, we're all together?
Separate, separate. So Triple H S would be a member. Um, I'm anticipating the family health team will also be a member as our C, C K L family health teams and C H C. That would, that would be my expectation, all, all the organizations would be members.
Excellent. So unfortunate maybe that we didn't get together a little bit sooner, you may have been able to help us with some of our local complexities, let's call them for now. Any other question for Stephanie? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity, I look forward to working with you.
As do we. Um, could I have a move in a second or then to receive the presentation, Councilors Carter and McKechnie?
By Councilor Carter, seconded by Councilor McKechnie, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information, May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three delegation from Stephanie McLaren. Executive Director of the Corel Lakes Ontario Health Team.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the next delegation is Oscar Poloney, who is going to do our financial statement review and year-end audit report. I believe Mr. Poloney is going to be joining us virtually. Morning, Oscar.
Morning, Madam Warren. Um, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here today to present the results of the year-end audit for the County of Halliburton. For the year ended December thirty first, twenty twenty-two. I will apologize to members of council, I had originally planned to be there in person, however, if I knew the difference between March twenty-fourth and March twenty-fifth. I would actually be there, unfortunately, council, I put this in my calendar for tomorrow, not today, so my apologies for that. Um, I would like to share my screen, we do have a presentation that we would like to walk county council through, and so. Um, hopefully everybody can see it. So we have completed our audit and we are prepared to issue our auditor's report. Our audit was conducted in accordance with Canadian auditing standards, which are the rules for auditors in Canada as to how they audit organizations. And we audit based on materiality, which is the threshold of errors that we are able to absorb before we either require them to be corrected. Or we change our audit opinion. Consistent with the general approach to auditing public sector organizations, materiality is generally calculated as a percentage of either revenues or expenses. So we've used the prior year's revenues and have calculated materiality at three percent, which yields eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, council, we use materiality in a number of different ways. We use it to determine our posting through our sample sizes, for example. But for the purposes of county council, probably the most relevant use of materiality is it drives what's known as a posting threshold. This is the level above which, if there are any errors that remain uncorrected. We need to report them to county council. It's calculated as five percent of materiality or an amount of forty-one thousand dollars. And just to put it in perspective, um, council, you have total revenues approaching thirty million dollars. So any errors above forty-one thousand dollars, we would report, that is basically the level of precision in our audit. Um, as I mentioned, our audit is complete, there are a couple of things that we require, we require council's approval of the financial statements. We also require the receipt of a management representation letter from your staff. Indicating they provided all relevant disclosures to us. There are no final audit procedures to complete between the time we've issued this presentation. And today we've basically wrapped up the file, so upon council's approval of the statements today. We'll take the draft stamp off, we'll put the signature on and the audit will be complete. Uh, there are no matters of significance that we've identified that we would suggest required to be disclosed to county council. No issues from an internal control perspective, no issues around contentious or controversial accounting treatments. And also no uncorrected audit differences above our posting threshold, so this audit is pretty much as clean as they get. So in terms of the financial statements, the first statement is your statement of financial position, which summarizes the county's assets and liabilities at year end. What you'll notice from a overall perspective is you do have cash and investments in your financial statements. And on a combined basis, those balances have increased from about eleven point six million dollars last year. To about eleven point nine million dollars this year. There's a number of things, council, that pull this number up and down. During the year, you actually had a surplus, once you adjust for working capital items and non-cash items. Of roughly six point one million dollars from an operating perspective. That six point one million dollars was used to finance about nine point six million dollars of capital additions. There was also about four point two million dollars of long-term debt that was issued by the county during the year for infrastructure projects. And also about four hundred thousand dollars in principal repayments on long-term debt, so these are the major components. That would move your cash balances up or down, from an overall perspective, your cash and investments moved a total of about three hundred thousand over last year. Um, we mentioned the investments, the investment balances are funds that are held with one investment, which is a group investment. Um, account, and on this slide, you can basically see. The individual components of your investments, they're broken down between some fixed income funds, including a high-interest savings account. There are some Canadian corporate bonds that you're holding and also some equities that you're holding as well. The investments are carried at market as opposed to cost, and you can see that for the most part. Market and cost are either consistent or slightly higher, there is a bit of a decrease of market value in the bond portfolio. And what this really reflects is the fact that as interest rates have gone up, bond values have come down, and that's something, council, that we're seeing consistently across the sector. It's uh, basically the impact of interest rates on bond investments. So in terms of other assets, your accounts receivable balances have gone up by about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on a year-over-year basis. There's been a significant increase in your accounts receivable balance, it's about three hundred thousand dollars higher than last year. And then in terms of grants and amounts receivable from other municipalities, those are slightly down. And so for the information of council. This is a buildup of your accounts receivable at year end. As you can see, the biggest single component that you have owing to you is with respect to H S T rebates. That really will increase or decrease depending on the amount of capital that you spend. Typically in years where you have bigger capital, you would have more H S T. There's a variety of grants that are owing to the municipality at year end, portion of the tax levy, which remains a bit outstanding. Some amounts owing from the City of Corel Lakes in Peterborough County, where you're actually sharing services. And then some smaller other accounts receivable. In terms of liabilities, from a liabilities perspective, accounts payable and accrued liabilities, which represent expenses incurred prior to year end. But paid after year end are up by about forty-one thousand dollars. Um, what you'll see is that there's, or sorry, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, the variety of things that pull this number up. Your holdbacks are higher by about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and once again, this reflects the pace of your capital spending. And trade payables are up by about um, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars as well. In terms of your accounts payable balances, we've shown sort of the breakdown here. In terms of overall accounts payable, you can see that there is some funding repayable. For the community paramedic program, where if you don't spend the money, the money is repayable, and this really is multi-year. There are construction holdbacks that are outstanding, there's balances owing to Corel Lakes for the social services that they provide. And then a variety of other amounts owing, particularly with respect to payroll, including payroll up to year end. Plus any vacation banks that you have, and then some additional other amounts payable. Deferred revenues, you can see on the financial statements have decreased by about two hundred and four thousand dollars. And what this represents are funds that you receive that you haven't earned yet, and so because of that, you basically defer them. Until such time as you use them. And your deferred revenue is really comprised of two different balances, there's the gas tax program. And the O C I F, which is a capital funding program that's provided to municipalities, so at the beginning of the year. There was about five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of, of gas tax that you had received but haven't spent yet. You received an additional five hundred and seventy-two thousand during the year. And then you've used the full amount, the one point one million dollar during the current year to fund your capital, so that balance is zero. With respect to O C I. So that balance is zero with respect to O C I F. There was six hundred and thirty thousand of grants received. You've recognized two hundred and eighty three thousand, so there's three hundred and forty six thousand of funding that you have that's available to be spent in the future. Terms of other liabilities, you can see that your long-term debt has gone up by roughly three point eight million dollars. As we mentioned earlier, there's about four point two million dollars of new debt that was issued for bridges and culverts. And offsetting that is about four hundred thousand dollars in principal repayments or repayments of your long-term debt. Your loans bear interest at different rates, anywhere between one point three eight percent to four point two four percent. So in terms of the last item to talk about on the statement, your tangible capital assets, this is the investment that the county has made with respect to its infrastructure. So this is the cost of your roads, your bridges, your facilities, your fleets. It's gone up by roughly four point six million dollars. There's nine point eight six million dollars of capital additions during the year. So a fairly heavy capital investment program, offset by about five point one million dollars of amortization expense, and then some asset dispositions as well. In terms of the investment that you've made in your infrastructure, you could see that by far the largest categories was with respect to roads and with respect to bridges, at roughly four point three million and three point three million each. And then a variety of other investments that you can see in terms of vehicles, equipment, buildings and culverts. Your prepaid expenses are up by about sixty seven thousand dollars. There's some prepaid cons- subscription fees that were made that would raise this amount as well. In terms of your capital additions, just for the information of county council, this is a breakdown of the investments that you've made by specific project. What you can see is significant investments with respect to roads projects and with respect to bridge projects as well. So the next statement, council, is the statement of operations, and this is a summary of your revenues and your expenses for the year. You can see that your total revenues have gone up by about three percent or eight hundred thousand dollars on a year-over-year basis. A number of different things that move this number around. Your municipal requisition has gone up by about nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The community parademic, paramedicine funding, the amount that recognized is five hundred and forty two thousand this year. So you get the same amount every year. It's just this year you've actually earned more. So you have a lower amount repayable, a higher amount that's actually retained by the county. Gas tax funding is up by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As we've mentioned, you've taken more in this year. Your O C I F funding is down by about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this reflects the fact that you've deferred your O C I F as opposed to recognize it as revenue. And then pandemic funding through the various programs such as safe restart are down by about five hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. We really have seen a tapering off in terms of senior government support with respect to pandemic. Offsetting these increases are increases in expenses of about three point six million dollars or fifteen percent. Number of different things that have contributed to this. The community paramedicine program had higher costs as well as higher funding, so you can see that impact there. Your amortization expense is up by about eight hundred thousand dollars. As you continue to invest in your infrastructure, this will increase amortization expense. Your payroll costs are up, um, partly due to the fact that the Torrey Hill EMS base has moved to twenty-four seven scheduling during the year. There was also some adjustments made to salaries as a result of salary evaluations. And what we can see is inside your transportation department, there's higher costs with respect to materials. This would include sand and salt and other aggregates. What you're starting to see here is the effect of both climate and inflation creeping into your financial statements. So from a grant perspective, just a bit of overview, you can see the grants by category. The largest single component that you have is with respect to your land ambulance or your EMS services. And once again, that's up significantly compared to the prior year because of the community para- paramedic program. You can see your gas tax revenue is up as well because you've deferred some last year, taking it this year. O C I F down and the pandemic safe restart COVID funding down as well. In terms of your operating expenses, we've shown you just a breakdown here. You can see once again wages and benefits are up. Materials are up, amortization and up. This is due to the investment that you're making in your infrastructure. This is due to the transportation material costs, which are both climate and inflation. And this once again is due to salary adjustments plus changes with respect to reambulance services. So council, just if I may, when you look at your statement of operations, there's twenty eight point two million dollars of revenue. There's twenty seven point two million dollars of expenses, which yields a surplus of about a million dollars. I'd like to caution council, and this is a discussion that we've had in the past, that how you account for things on your financial statements isn't necessarily how you budget them. So for the information of council, we've put together this slide. And what this does is this takes your reported surplus for financial statements and it adjusts for all of those differences. So for example, it add backs amortization expense and deducts capital expenditures. It removes things like the repayment on the long-term debt. It adds the issuance of the long-term debt as a revenue source to fund capital. And then there's reserve transfers. And what you'll find, council, is once you look at your financial statements and you adjust them to how you budget, during the year, you actually had a surplus of about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. That council represents less than one percent of your total revenues. And from our perspective, that really tells us three things. Um, one is the municipality is, is basically operating at break even or close to break even because you're plus or minus one percent. What it also tells us, council, is that your budget process works because you don't have very wide swings in terms of the financial results. So effectively, how you set your budget actually materializes at year end. And consistent with that comment, what it also demonstrates is that in year, your ability or your staff's ability to monitor your operations to ensure that you continue to balance between revenues and expenses and for lack of a better term, lives within your means, that actually occurs as well. Um, so what I would suggest, council, is the fact that you could get to less than one percent of total revenues from a budget perspective, um, speaks well to how you do your budgets and how you do your financial management. So, Madam Warden, members of county council, that concludes our presentation. I'd like to thank you once again for allowing us the opportunity to be of service to the county. I'd like to apologize once again for not actually being there in person. Um, my regrets for that. If there are any questions, more than happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks very much, Oscar. Um, and of course, it's always nice to see you in person. We'll just hold you to your feet to the fire for next year that we see you in person.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. And, and I've got to say thanks and appreciation to Andrea Robinson and your staff for all the hard work and for the position you've left us in at the end of the year. Much appreciated. So any questions from council? Counselor Carter?
Thank you, Oscar. Um, as, as, as we've done before, I ask questions. You then tell me how, um, you know, government accounting works, and I say that's crazy and we start over again. Um, so the, a, a couple of questions. And I've, I've had this, you know, this, this thought process going for a while in terms of reserves. So as, as an example, if I look at this type, uh, this year's um, budget and, and the performance, you know, we, we took on some debt. And, um, you know, our, but our cash at the end of the year was about five point two million dollars. We took on, I think it was about four point one million dollars worth of debt. Um, we also had, you know, investments, investments that were paying, you know, pretty much zero, uh, percent. And, uh, and we took on debt that was at four point two percent, uh, interest rate. Should we have taken on that debt?
Um, through you, Madam Warden. So councillor Carter, as you can appreciate from earlier conversations, it's really not our place to dictate policy to county council. Um, the comment, the comment that I would make and it's, it's my personal view and, and my experience. Generally speaking, what you'll find is municipalities, some don't like the concept of debt and they operate with a pay-as-you-go strategy. I personally can understand why coun- why councils would do that. I don't necessarily suggest that approach. And what it requires you to do is to accumulate significant deferrals in your capital programs, which means that your service level standards start to drop. When I look at what you've borrowed for this year, specifically around the bridges, for example, these are very long-term assets that, once you make the initial investment, you will get the benefit of it for multiple years. This isn't a pickup truck that you're using for seven years. So some people would suggest that debt financing in these perspect- in these situations is actually appropriate for two reasons. One is because it allows you to undertake infrastructure project that you wouldn't be able to afford otherwise. And two, by using debt, you're able to spread that cost across multiple generations so that future users of the asset have the cost, an, an portion of the cost to bear as well, because you spread the repayment of the debt over time. Um, what I would also suggest, council, and this isn't a value judgment, but previous analysis undertaken by K P M G and shared with this council has demonstrated that in terms of upper-tier municipalities at the county level, you actually have a lower level of reserves per household than your peers. So your ability to undertake a pay-as-you-go approach is actually somewhat challenged by the fact that your reserves are proportionately speaking, lower than your peers. And so what I would suggest is, this is very much a circumstance or a situation where the decision I would imagine was, A, do we need to do this? And B, how do we pay for this? I won't get into the, did you need to do this? But I would appreciate that transportation infrastructure needs to be addressed. And, and the most recent asset management planning that you're seeing coming across, um, Ontario has demonstrated significant infrastructure deficits. The use of debt, I would suggest, probably represented a prudent approach. Um, probably reflected the fact that you didn't have the balances and reserves necessary to undertake a pay-as-you-go approach. But that's just my observation, council. I wasn't privy to those conversations. It's just when I look at your financial statements, I would suggest to you that you can see rationale and justification for using debt. And councillor Carter, I hope that answers your question. I'm not trying to be evasive. I'm just trying to be respectful of the role of council in making these decisions.
No, it, it does. And, and I, I don't disagree with you on that. And, you know, I, I recognize it's not your, um, job to be telling us how to run things. Uh, but you do see an awful lot of other books. And, uh, so the, um, the comparisons with other, um, other municipalities and, and counties in terms of reserves and, and the usage of debt is, uh, it's, is, it's always helpful. Could I, another question? So my, my other question is, what, what you just talked about a little bit there is, is the whole idea of fixed assets. So when we look at our tangible capital assets and let's, as an example, we'll just use the bridges. So we have, um, you know, our cost of the bridges were about eleven point seven million. Um, we've had, um, I think amortization of about two and a half million, which means that on our books, we have a net book value of nine point two million. So now we're into this situation, we're going to be doing fixed assets. And I think bridges are particularly interesting because, you know, I think as we have our amortization schedule of fifty to a hundred years. And we in Minden just replaced a bridge that was built in nineteen fourteen. And, um, I can tell you that on the books it was zero, but for the people who drove over it every day, it was probably worth more than zero. So, um, when we get into this fixed assets and we're talking about replacement values, so the, you know, the nine point two million dollars we have on the books for our bridges, the replacement value could be, you know, many times that number. So how, how is that gonna, how is that going to be reflected on our, uh, our statements in the future? Like, how are we going to square that circle?
So through you, Madam Warden, councillor, there is no provision under the public sector accounting standards for replacement costing. And so the, the short answer is, is your financial statements are not the place to square that. Because in the case of Minden, for example, prior to two thousand and nine, no municipalities actually carried capital assets on their books. They expensed them. In two thousand and nine, when you, what, what you would have done is you would have set that bridge up based on what it cost in nineteen fourteen and depreciated forward. And basically it's written off as zero. The true place, council, to true this up or square this up is with respect to your asset management plan. That's a requirement under the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act, where you would actually need to show not only the historical cost, but the replacement cost of your bridges and culverts over four meters and also their, um, condition assessment and service level standards for them. What, what I would suggest, council, is your asset management plan is actually the driver for how you make budgetary decisions with respect to investments in infrastructure and also financing for those investments if you choose to start to build up your reserve balances in order to fund future capital. That, councillor Carter, is where you're going to find that information you're looking for. Um, I can appreciate why you're looking at it in the financial statements, the comment that I would make. And, and please appreciate, I don't make the rules. The financial statements are not the place for it because of the nature of accounting rules. It's historical cost base. There's no adjustment for replacement value. And so you've got eleven million dollars worth of bridges at historical cost. I would suggest to you, there's probably one or two bridges that if you had to replace them, they would add up to a million, uh, eleven million dollars just on their own. Unfortunately, councillor Carter, that truing up doesn't happen in the financial statements. It happens with the asset management plan.
Right. And that's just going to make it very confusing for anybody who is the casual observer. Uh, because everything comes back down to dollars and, which is a standard number. And yet the way you're looking at those dollars is, is different. Thank you.
Mr. CEO? If I could go back, uh, Warden, to the, the previous question and, and with respect to reserves. Um, I think councillor Carter will get great comfort, which might have the actual opposite impact for Andrea Robinson and I. Um, but, uh, council passed a budget that drew on those reserves significantly in two thousand twenty-three. Um, that number will be a lot lower, like half in two thousand, when, when, when Oscar comes and presents next year. Um, so, uh, that, 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 those reserves have been utilized in, in two thousand twenty-three's budget.
Any other questions? Could I have a mover in a seconder to receive Oscar's report? Counselors Burton and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Burton, seconded by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the presentation from Oscar Poloney of K P M G regarding the two thousand twenty-two audited financial statements and the draft financial statements for the year ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. And further that the two thousand twenty-two audited financial statements be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the approval of recommendations from committee of the whole. Mike, could have the mover in a seconder? Counselors, uh, Rial and McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that the recommendations from the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? That's carried. And I think maybe we'll take a ten-minute break before we get into planning. Welcome back. And next on the agenda is planning and environment. Uh, Mr. Stone is away today, so Mike will be giving the planning department update on his behalf.
I, I thank you, Warden. I, I won't, uh, get into much detail unless there are questions. Um, the director, before he left for vacation, uh, did an update report. Um, but I'm happy to answer questions if I can or, or commit to get you answers if I can't.
Were there any questions on the planning department's update? We're going late on you today.
Thank you.
Could I have a mover in a seconder then to receive that report? Councillor Ferry? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive that report? Counselor Ferry, Counselor Dayu.
Moved by Counselor Ferry, seconded by Counselor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report, PLN thirty-six dash two zero two three. Entitled Planning Department Update for May two thousand twenty-three for information.
All in favor. That's carried. Uh, next up is Corey McKay to talk to us about the draft community climate action plan. Over you, Corey.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden and council. If I may expand on the planning department update before I begin. Um, and give an update on the food cycler project. And yesterday we received the second shipment of the food cyclers. And this Friday and Saturday are the second distribution event. So. By the beginning of June, we should have almost all five hundred units in the homes of residents. And and we will ask them to track progress for twelve weeks and I'll report back later this year on the results.
Well, I'm glad to see that that program was as successful as one could hope. So look forward to hearing your next report.
Thank you. So I'm excited to present to you today a first draft of our community climate action plan. Next slide, please, Mark. So climate change refers to long term shifts in temperature and weather patterns. Since the industrial revolution, humans have emitted significant greenhouse gas emissions. Largely through the combustion of fossil fuels. And these greenhouse gases trap heat in our atmosphere, which is changing our earth's climate. We've already seen about one point one degrees of global average temperature rise since pre-industrial times. One point one degrees might not seem like a lot in the context of weather. But in the context of climate, the analogy of a human fever is often used where one degree makes a significant difference. Since we're already experiencing the impacts of climate change, we have to adapt. An example of an adaptation measure is floodproofing. However, we can still avoid the worst impacts of climate change if we mitigate, which means to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. An example of mitigation is energy efficiency. And there are many synergies between adaptation and mitigation. So for example, a tree. Acts as a carbon sink, which helps with mitigation. And it also absorbs storm water, which helps with adaptation. So our plan looks at mitigation and adaptation together. Next slide, please. Climate change is a global issue, but it makes the most sense to address it at a local level. Um, municipalities are on the front lines of climate impacts. And they also have influence over about half of Canada's greenhouse gas emissions, so through things like land use and transportation planning. When we build more sustainable and resilient communities, we can improve our community health and well-being. Create local jobs, improve biodiversity. Reduce our energy costs and also avoid long term costs from damages from climate impacts down the road. So there are many co-benefits of climate action, making some of these actions win-win opportunities. And an important part, point to highlight is that while climate action often requires upfront investment, it's often more expensive not to take action. The Canadian Climate Institute recently put out a report that said. For every dollar that's invested in some of the most important climate adaptation measures, you can save thirteen to fifteen dollars in the long term. So the vision we came up with after much community consultation is that Halliburton County is a place where biodiversity and natural assets are preserved. And climate friendly options are convenient, desirable and affordable. So there's two pieces there. The first, Halliburton's rich with wetlands and forests, and it's important to the community that those are protected. And the second piece is that the solutions to climate change already exist. We just have to find ways to rapidly deploy them. And make them more accessible for people. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on how we got here. In the fall of twenty twenty-one, we finalized a community greenhouse gas inventory and a local climate projections report. This provided the baseline information that was necessary to create a draft plan. And and it also achieved milestone one of the Partners for Climate Protection Program. Next, we formed an advisory group that was made up of members of each local council, as well as county council. County staff and experts from around the community. So this group met four times over last year to provide input into the development of the plan, and it was an extremely valuable resource for staff. Next, we looked out into the community as a whole and designed community engagements that were meant to be both educational as well as provide ample opportunity for feedback. Both of these engagements got great response rates, the first with over four hundred responses and the second with nearly three hundred. And then lastly, we met with local organizations to get their feedback on the plan as well. Next slide, please. To highlight some of the most prevalent climate impacts, as I'm sure you've heard before, we're seeing warmer, wetter and wilder weather. Higher average temperatures with more extreme heat waves. More extreme rainfall events with longer dry spells in between those events and more extreme storms. And it's important to note that some people are more vulnerable to the impacts of climate change than others. Not everybody's impacted in the same way. Uh, so using extreme heat as an example. Seniors, people with pre-existing health conditions, people who work outside or people who don't have air conditioning. Are all going to be more vulnerable to those impacts. And our health unit has done a deeper dive into this with their recently completed vulnerability assessment. Next slide, please. Uh, so this slide gives an overview of our community greenhouse gas emissions, uh, which were presented to council, I believe in the fall of twenty twenty-one. And so two thousand nineteen was used as the baseline year and the majority of our local emissions are a result of transportation followed by buildings. In a business as usual scenario, so if no plan is in place, we're going to see. More homes and more vehicles on the road, which will see a growth in emissions. However, there's policies and programs that are already in place working toward emission reduction. So. Our federal government has committed to a forty to forty-five percent reduction by twenty thirty. And our provincial government's working toward a thirty percent reduction by twenty thirty. Uh, so this will help to mitigate the growth in emissions. The draft plan sets a target to reduce local emissions by twenty-five percent by twenty thirty with a long term goal of reaching net zero by twenty fifty. Next slide, please. There are six overarching strategies in the plan with twenty-eight actions underneath. Larger actions would come forward to council on a case by case basis with further scope and details for approval. Actions are a mix of education, awareness, programs and policy. Uh, so strategy one, shifting away from the personal vehicle. Halliburton's a large and geographically dispersed community, so private vehicles are the dominant mode of transportation. And will likely remain that way. Um, so these solutions will look different than those in urban areas, but there's increasingly unique solutions available. Strategy two, shifting to zero emission vehicles. So as we continue to rely on private vehicles. Zero emission vehicles will be an important uh, strategy locally. And we can help facilitate that transition in a few ways. So both education and awareness. As well as expanding charging infrastructure. Strategy three, retrofit retrofitting existing homes, cottages and buildings. Um, energy efficiency upgrades are an extremely cost effective way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Approximately five hundred or five thousand households in the county experience a high energy cost burden. So there's an opportunity here to reduce emissions while also making life more affordable. Strategy four, encouraging low carbon new development. So there are ways in which we can encourage and incentivize building lower carbon upfront, which is less expensive than retrofitting later. Strategy five, accelerate local production of low carbon energy. Uh, so locally produced energy provides greater resilience against power outages. Provides energy independence and security against rising energy prices and also helps to keep money in the local economy. And lastly, but not least, protecting our natural assets. Uh, so we're abundant with wetlands, forests, lakes and rivers. That's what we call nature based climate solutions. Uh, so it'd be important to assess what we have and work to protect it. Next slide, please. Uh, so a few points as we move toward implementation. Um, I wanted to emphasize that while the county would champion such a plan, if it is adopted. The plan will be most successful if we collaborate with other organizations in the community as well as beyond the community. Leveraging funding opportunities will be important for larger scale actions. Building a culture of climate action across our municipal operations as well as the community as a whole. Um, education awareness came up often in community engagement. Prioritizing cross cutting actions. So. There are actions in this plan that overlap with priorities in our community safety and well-being plan and our economic development strategy. And therefore there's opportunities to achieve multiple benefits there. Um, continuously monitoring and reviewing progress. So to ensure that the plan doesn't sit on a shelf, it'll be important to. Continue with our annual climate action progress reports and also re-inventory community emissions every five years. And lastly, staff are recommending to re-establish the advisory group as an implementation group. Next slide, please. So to end with a quote, um, our world needs climate action on all fronts, everything, everywhere, all at once. As you may be aware, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released an important report in March. Um, so I just wanted to highlight a few key points. Uh, they emphasized that to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. We need deep and immediate greenhouse gas reductions across all sectors this decade. And so the choices and actions implemented now will have impacts for thousands of years. And this really is the most critical time to take action and to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. So that's all for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions or get any feedback on the draft plan from council.
Thanks very much, Corey, and thanks for your work on this. Um, I'm, I'm really pleased to see you recommending that we reinstate the advisory group because it's. It's sort of been on hiatus for a while and it'd be good to see that reinstated. Uh, questions or comments from council? Uh, Counselor Rayo.
Corey, thank you very much. Excellent, excellent, uh, presentation and. Pretty easy for me to follow and that's kind of exciting all by itself. The, the thing that I have to ask and 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 because of where we are, what our people do. Recreational vehicles. Gasoline powered. We have snowmobiles. We have ATVs. We have motorcycles. We have boats. Is, is, is it possible to even come up with a policy to, 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 to address those or is it something? That we're just gonna have to live with and because of where we are and hopefully offset it with other things.
Yeah, thanks for your question. So. Policy to address that, I'm not sure what's in the purview of a municipality. A lot of the actions in the draft plan focus on education and awareness. So. For example, there's an organization called Plug and Drive that can bring. Um, electric vehicles to a community for people to test drive. And eventually that might expand into boats or snowmobiles, et cetera. So showing people what options are available. Um, can be an effective uh, strategy there and also promoting. You know, paddling and other non-motorized activities as well as another strategy that's mentioned. So. That's how um, it's recommended to move forward for off-road vehicles. Also a strategy in there to more accurately measure our emissions from those vehicles because essentially we just took. Provincial data and downscaled it for our area, which isn't the best, but. Many communities don't even include that in their inventory, but we realized it's something important to include for Halliburton, of course.
Counselor Carter.
So, um, thank you for the report, but we are, um. Since we started. You know, a lot has changed. And you know, things are changing every day. So, um. It would seem to me that this needs to be kind of a living. Plan. So you know, I. The idea of getting the advisory group together to be an implementation. Uh, group. It would seem to me that we also need to have a group. On the side or at least a certain amount of time. Um, being spent on, hey, what's changing and how does that affect our plan? And how do we have to have the plan constantly evolving? And I don't know. If you agree with that or or not.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Yes, small examples in our, our business as usual scenario. We're gonna have growth projections soon and that will be important to incorporate into there. There's always new data, new programs federally, provincially. Um, so it will be important to revisit the plan as well as our corporate plan somewhat regularly just to. Re-jig them to update them with any changes or new actions that might come up um, in conversations with the advisory group or the community.
Other questions? I know Counselor Dayu would probably love to ask some questions, but unfortunately she has no voice today. Um, I, I do wonder if, uh. If you could make a suggestion about how the advisory group would be comprised. Are you looking at the similar structure as what we had in the past?
Yes, pretty well. Um, at our last meeting, as it was only designed temporarily. One of the last things we discussed is, did this work? Well, what would you recommend moving forward? And it worked really well. Um, so I can bring back a draft terms of reference to council. Um, outlining what that might look like alongside the final draft of the plan for approval.
Okay, look forward to that. Any other comments or questions? Uh, well, thanks again, and I would look for a mover in a, mover in a second or to. Receive the report and to bring back the terms of reference for the advisory group. Um, Counselor Dayu and Counselor Burton.
Moved by Counselor Dayu, seconded by Counselor Burton. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three staff report on the draft community climate action plan. And that Halliburton County Council's comments be incorporated into a final draft of the community climate action plan. And that staff be directed to bring back a final draft community climate action plan for approval. And further, that staff be directed to develop a terms of reference for an advisory group that will help guide the implementation of the community climate action plan.
All in favor. That's carried. Thanks very much, Corey. Uh, next under administrative reports, uh, there's the correspondence summary listing. Um, did anyone have any comments or questions about the correspondence? I've seen none. Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the correspondence summary listing? Counselor Carter, Counselor Dayu.
Moved by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the correspondence listing for the period of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three to May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor. That's carried. I believe we have a rail trail status report this meeting. Um, there is a report on the summer meeting schedule.
Yes, that over to you. Um, so we, we, uh. When we did the uh, initial meeting schedule for the year that was presented in December last year. Um, we had shown the August Committee of the Whole, July and August Committee of the Whole is optional. Um, we, we, uh. When we. I guess we've, we've, we have a little bit of a conflict with the normal date for the, the uh, council meeting. Um, because it conflicts with the AMO, uh, annual general meeting, which happens in London on, at the same time. So one of the options that we've outlined here is to, is to really, um. As our, as it has been our practice normally, to not have our meeting in our committee, the whole meeting in Ju- in July, just have a council meeting. But then to replicate that in August as well. Um, moving the council meeting to August sixteenth, which is a week earlier than it would normally happen. Um, the, uh, the, if, if we require a special meeting through the month, that can always be called. Um, provided we have enough notice to, uh. To, to provide the notice for the meeting, but uh, that, that's what we're recommending. Um, I guess the, the one thing I did put in is alternatively, if we wanted to go ahead with the committee of the whole at the normal date. We could move the council meeting to August thirtieth, but I have heard from some that there's a conflict in, in uh, schedule with that. So. That's.
Mr. Perry.
Well, I'm a little bit concerned with the major issue that we've got is short term rental. And we're doing dick all about it, to be honest. So let's, let's, if we have to take a day or two, we have to do it. I think, I think we just can't let it keep sliding. It'll be fall. We won't have a registration done. We won't have anything done. I think that's pretty serious business. It's our priority.
Well, thank you for raising that because that was one of the things that I would, I would have suggested that we, uh, you know, at the very least, uh, you know, have a, uh. A, a committee of the whole meeting in July or that we set special meetings for. Uh, for short term rentals. I, it's just something that. I, I've got several emails yesterday asking me like, where are you with that? When are you going to do something about it? And it looks to me like if we don't, I mean, we're, we're going to get through a difficult year without it in place. At the very least, we're only going to be able to do registration.
If I could, I don't think our intention was. If I could, I don't think our intention was to wait till July. Actually, I think we were hoping to bring that information in June. Um, the I'm not sure it'll be committee of the whole, but in June at some point, um, the the, the challenge we have with the, with the committee structure that we have is when we meet every two weeks. The council actually don't do anything in the middle, in the week between, but staff are actually doing reports and agendas and all of that. So it's actually that week's busier for us than, than it, um, the, the meeting week. Then the meeting week, we, we obviously have to be here. So, um, I guess if, if we go ahead with those meetings, the one thing I would say is that, um, you know, we, there may be staff missing because we, we really do have to allow staff to take vacations and other things. Otherwise we get a lot, you know, large bank of, of, of vacation and bank that we need to, to use up.
Well, I guess that, that my only comment to that would be that, that, that's the one thing that we really do need to resolve. So we would need all staff that would, you know, we could focus, you know, a, a meeting. To me, we need to have a meeting or two or whatever we need to do to, to get it done. Um, that, that one particular piece of work. Counselor Carter.
Just a question on procedure. Can, if we have a special meeting, can we enact something in that special meeting? Like for instance, we have the committee of the whole in which we just get the reports and then we have to wait for the committee meeting to be able to pass it. When we have a special meeting, what, what status does it have?
It's a, it's a special council meeting. So you're sitting as council.
So we can, we can enact things.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think that would be a preferable way of, of, you know, moving this forward if we, if, if we have to. So for instance, let us say that the, you know, the month, you know, is whatever. I don't know the dates, but let's say June 16th was the committee of the whole. If we want to talk about short-term uh, accommodation, we could have a special meeting on the same day so that we could enact something or at least give more direction.
Absolutely. Yep, exactly.
Counselor Shell. Thank you. Um, so I, I think I can talk about this during this part of the meeting, but um, so a few years ago, when we implemented going to committee of the whole, instead of having the two council meetings, we had talked about, you know, seeing how it worked for a little bit and, you know, if staff were happy with that, if council was happy with that. And I'm just, have, have we done that? Like, is that, is that something that this, maybe the new county council should discuss at some point, just to see how that's working for staff as far as like, you know, Counselor Carter just said about, you know, you wait sometimes two weeks because you get the report and then you're moving it forward. I will tell you that Minden Hills has actually switched and it was Brent who had wanted the committee of the whole here, but now we've actually switched to two regular meetings because we were finding sometimes, you know, you get something for um, an RFP, for example, that needs to be awarded. We didn't want to have to wait the two weeks. So there was constantly people, you know, staff saying, oh, but you know, pre-approval, pre-approval. So it didn't make sense, but just something to consider as we're having this discussion right now that, you know, maybe that's something we should discuss as this new county council as well.
Counselor Rayo.
Yeah, I have a tendency to agree. Uh, as far as making a permanent transfer from committee of the whole to, 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 to council meetings. I'm, I'm fine with that, but what I'm thinking in relation to where we have to be over the next three months, taking us to the end of the summer and where we stand with tight issues like short-term. I think we should be having special meetings and not committee of the whole where we can make decisions then and there as we need to make them.
And well, we can do both. We can have a committee of the whole meeting and a special meeting right after it. I, I need to me, the, the committee of the whole meetings, rather than having separate committees, where not everyone is involved in the discussion, the committee of the whole allows us all to be involved in the discussion about everything and that, that part I like, although there is, you know, the, the delay from time to time. But at any time you can make it, you know, you can make a decision if you need to by having a special meeting. So um, you know, and look for some input from, from yourself on, you know, thoughts. I think Counselor Perry has something.
We dropped committee of the whole because it was a tremendous amount of work for staff between meetings. You're dealing with the same thing twice. I, I, I just don't understand that how, how we're, I hear what you're saying about everybody hearing, but they can still hear everything at the other meeting. So I, I, I just, I, I think it's a lot of work for staff because they, they do, they do, they do it once and then they prepare another report and we pass it at the second meeting. Like that's a lot of work. And maybe that's one reason that the staff are so tied up. Anyway, give you the, think more.
Well, the, the workload is, is for you to comment on, but you know, which works better. Yeah.
I, I think the, the issue of two council meetings or a committee of the whole and council is really from a staff standpoint, very little different. There's, it, it, um, I think there's the one report from the committee of the whole report, which is really a cut and paste exercise. So it, it's not really that much. Where there's a significant amount of extra work for staff is when we had the former standing committee system where we had four or five different agendas to do on a committee day. That was a lot of extra work for staff. So it, we find, I mean, there are times where it would be handy to, you know, not have the, the two weeks um, where you have to wait for the, the approval. But, but it, that two weeks sometimes is an effective, you know, we get a sense of, of where council is going on, on an issue, then you can refine based on council's comments and then bring it back in two weeks for approval. It, it also gives a chance for council to have some sober second thought. That's really the intention where, where you, um, that doesn't happen a lot here. I'll be honest. I, we, I can't really, not, not that council doesn't have sober second thought. I don't mean that. But, uh, it, we, we don't find that the, the direction changes a lot between meetings. So again, again, it's, yeah, the two meetings, whether it's two council meetings or a committee of the whole and council that, that's really whatever council wants. We, it's no extra work either way for us. Um, sometimes it would be handy if we could just get right on business, but council's also been really good when we need it to say, yeah, go ahead and, and do that and don't wait for council.
So to your, we don't have too much opportunity for sober second thought. I would just prefer to think us as being more decisive.
For sure.
Unless it comes to something like, you know, a, a real challenge like the short-term, uh, short-term rentals, which we, we really need to land somewhere with that. Counselor Carter.
And I, I think just following on, on, on what Mr. Rutter said, the, the, the idea of having like the committee of the whole, then calling a special meeting. That if it were, if it were a council meeting to begin with, we could make a decision. If in the committee of the whole, we decided that we want to make a decision, we can't then call a special meeting without giving notice and all those types of things. So, you know, you would, you would have to almost be planning to make the decision on the, on the same day so that you could give the proper notification and so on. I, I have to admit that the committee of the whole, when I first became a counselor, you know, I, I, it took me a long time to, to figure out what exactly was happening. And, and you know, as a matter of fact, right now I'd have to go look at my agenda or to remember which meeting we're in right now. And so, yeah, I, I think just having committee meetings is, is a preferable way to go on a, on a go-forward basis, but we could have a, a further discussion on that or, or whatever, but.
But what you're hearing is that it's a lot more work to do that. That's what Mike just said.
To do what?
To have committee meetings.
I don't think.
Are you meaning committee of the?
I mean, council meetings. Sorry, council.
Okay.
She, she translates for me, but yeah, no, I meant council meetings is.
We, we are totally off topic now.
Yeah, right.
I'm, I must say, but, uh, go ahead, Counselor Rayo.
I, I think it's a great idea. And the other thing too, it would make, make it easier for, 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 for staff would be to, to, although the, the agendas themselves, that's blanks would be the same. It doesn't necessarily mean that every subject has to be discussed at even two meetings. So if it makes more sense to discuss the finance at the end of the month as opposed to the front of the month, then we should discuss it more there. Comes up as, unless you think there's something we should deal in both. And then we can kind of sort of take, take advantage of the resources and, and, and still at the same time, get the information we need to do the job. I, I, I like the two council meetings.
My concern with this is, is if you're talking about having two council meetings, formal council meetings as opposed to committee of the whole, I would envision it as being one council meeting being handled somewhat like a committee of the whole meeting, but having the ability to make decisions. Both of them could be the same way and you, you may have some issues that are dealt more in detail at one meeting and others at, at another meeting, rather than the, the issue and the rationale for, for changing to committee of the whole was the issue of committees. And the fact that the committees were meeting separately, that not everyone was involved in a decision-making process of people were waiting for one committee to be to meet and then, you know, before not involved in that discussion and having to sit and wait for their committee meeting to start. There wasn't equal representation. There were a lot of concerns about the committee meetings themselves and, and how they were held. So you know, it, it doesn't matter to me whether we have two formal council meetings as long as the, um, we're all involved in, in all of the discussions. Well, we'll look to a report to come back at a, at a subsequent meeting, providing options and make, uh, make some kind of decision on that. Because we don't, haven't asked for enough reports to be brought back. Um, okay. So for now, uh, we're all right with the summer meeting schedule and, or we're not, we're calling special meetings. What's your wish? See, you're shaking your head and nodding your head.
Sorry, I was just based on, on what, uh, what the C A O has presented to us. We haven't agreed to it. So that's why I was saying we're, we're not necessarily okay whether we move that meeting in August to the 16th or the 30th. Is it, it seems that the, the regularly scheduled meeting is going to be a, a pretty empty meeting.
I, I'm sorry, I'm.
Regularly scheduled meeting is at the same time as, uh, as AMO. And so if, 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 if many of us are at AMO.
But the 16th, I think the 16th is being recommended as being a regular meeting. That's not during AMO.
No.
Sorry, my. I, you know, it's going right over my head.
I interpret. I think what Counselor Carter is saying is that the 16th is a more appropriate time to have our, our regular meeting and allowing for a special meeting on, on August 30th. Is, is okay. But so, so basically you're saying the recommendation in the report is acceptable to you. Yeah.
I think we were saying exactly the same thing.
Differently, but.
Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the recommendation from the C A O? Counselors Carter and Rayo.
Uh, moved by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Ryle, be resolved that Halliburton County Council directs staff to amend the meeting schedule for July and August as outlined in this report and that staff be directed to prepare a public notice of the changes.
All in favor? Recognizing that we may very well have more meetings than we had originally.
And I, I think the staff report, um, will come back mid-November. I think that's when we bring them back.
Or December, there's been our one meeting in December. Okay, uh, next, uh, on the agenda is, uh, an update from the paramedic service for your, the year-end report.
Good morning, Warden, members of council.
Good morning, Chief Wade.
Um, I guess my question is, how would you, do you have questions or would you like me to just sort of go through the year-end report? Just highlight the highlights or?
Uh, what's your preference, counsel? I think, I mean, we've all looked at the report. I don't think you. I think we've read the report. If you wanted to provide us with some, some highlights from your perspective, that would be great. Sure.
Okay. So, um, as far as our response times, um, when we established those targets in, um, in the fall of, uh, 2021 and, uh, as you can see, we met all of them for 2022. Um, I think one of the, uh, sort of major things here to look at is our call volumes. Um, and, uh, especially the patient carried, uh, calls have increased by 14% in, uh, 2022 or 2021. So that's fairly significant. Uh, when I first started here, we saw call volumes increasing by six, seven percent per year, but, um, that's, uh, fairly significant. So overall 11%, but that's patient carried calls around 14%. Again, our Halliburton base, uh, sees the, the most call volume, but that's because we also have, um, two ambulances stationed, uh, there. Uh, one for 24 hours and the second one at the 12 hours a day. Uh, interesting, the majority of, the large majority of our patients are greater than the age of 60. So from 62, we do have the odd patient that's over 100, um, is well over two thirds of our call volume. And we do continue to do, uh, um, calls in different, um, in different areas, outside of our county. Um, but also sometimes calls are completed by other ambulance services in our county. So you can just see that, uh, we continue to do quite a few outside of the county and a lot of that is attributable to we're transferring patients outside of our county and then we get, uh, assigned a call while we're in, in the, uh, in, in neighbors', uh, county. So that's why we end up doing a, a high percentage of calls in other areas. Um, the next two graphs are, uh, the vehicle, um, fuel usage and I think, um, two things have increased the, the cost of our fuel is the, the, how much we spend on fuel and that's the cost, but also you can see in the second graph, um, the increased number of kilometers that we traveled, uh, between, uh, 2021 and 2022. Uh, it's fairly significant. So going from 467,000 kilometers to 500 and almost 502,000 kilometers. So, um, those two things attribute to the, uh, to the increase, uh, fuel cost for us. Um, our top 10 priorities, uh, just to highlight again, these are not all the call types, but these are just sort of the top 10. Um, our major, uh, in the top 10 is, uh, transfers. And that's transfers to, uh, neighboring hospitals, whether it be for diagnostics, whether it be for admission uh, to another hospital, but they are the majority, the, uh, the largest percent of our calls. So again, accomplishments, I think some of the, one of the great ones is we, uh, uh, Tory Hill is now, uh, remain 24 hours, uh, a day, seven days a week and is now permanent. We have ordered our two new ambulances, but they have been delayed until, uh, probably this fall. Um, we completed all our training. We've hired a new quality, um, uh, assurance and education deputy chief and, um, through all the supply chain issues, we've managed to maintain our stock, especially in P P E. Um, and to, uh, not really be short of anything, uh, during all these, uh, these few years. Uh, just looking at the community paramedic program, again, it's growing significantly. Um, it's a very nimble program. We jumped in when vaccines were needed in the homes. Um, at any one time, we have approximately, um, 150 clients rostered. And as you can see, we do significant amount of visits, um, uh, every month. Um, and again, this is just, uh, the funding received for the community paramedic program is on the fiscal year. So April 1st to uh, March 31st, whereas we work on the calendar year. So I just have the first three quarters, uh, in here when we started to really track, uh, the information from the community paramedic program. And you can see a fairly significant jump in fuel costs for the community paramedic program, but um, in 2022, that can be attributed to now we have two community paramedic vehicles rather than just one. Um, our emergency management, um, again, we were compliant, the letter of complacency is attached. Uh, we did our exercise using the emergency management group and we'll do the, we're doing that again this year and, um, and, uh, we've used Twitter, uh, we use Facebook, um, for sending out messaging to, uh, the community. Our public access differentiation program, um, again, is in the community. We have 49, uh, public access devices in 39 different locations. And, um, we purchased eight new ones last year to replace, uh, 10 aging ones. And, uh, the, uh, annual inspections were all completed, um, over the past year. And that's really the highlights of the report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the year-end report? Counselor Carter.
Net of a station. You have that's that's here the call was. In other words, you've got an address, a place you're responding to.
We can sort of do a general overview of, yes, the the calls happening. I think we have presented a previous report before this council that using the iMedic data, we can identify where calls are happening. Again, the majority of calls, just off the top of my head, are in the Halliburton Minden area. And because they're the most populous populous area. And then outside of the county, they kind of get scattered all over or outside of the two main towns.
Go ahead.
The other two things or comments to the the idea of the if we consider about fifty percent and they're taking up seventy-one percent of your calls. Which is close to the averages as we provide right more than that medical services. And then the other thing that I was could vary of calls, that's with seventy percent of your total of your total costs. So it's it's a significant it becomes a significant number of more time we have spending. It was so that the county so on. Then we were exposed to all of you.
Correct, yes, yeah. And some of them can be attributed to if we take the patient down to Lindsay and then we return them. That's a call that we've just accumulated outside our areas. So some some of those are are that, but some are it is a big number, but some of them are that they're coming back empty and they get assigned a call. My priority call in the area.
Any other questions, councillor Burton?
I think you're wording through to to Tim. I think you said we have forty-nine defibrillators in thirty-nine locations?
Yes, correct.
How does that work?
Well, some locations have more than one. I forget how many are in the Minden arena. I think there's four or five in there. So some locations will have more than one, and we have a few spares.
Any other questions? Well, thanks so much, Tim. Could I have a move in a second or two to receive the year end report? Councillor Sperry and Ryle.
Move by councillor Ferry, second by councillor Ryle, be resolved that Halliburton County Council received for information the two thousand twenty-two year end paramedic service report.
All in favor? That's carried. In our sincere appreciation to all of your team for the work that they do here. Thank you. So next is a verbal update on our EMS department's planning for the HHS emergency department consolidation.
So, yeah, we I had to put this together as a verbal report, because as you know, it's moving fairly quickly. So to have this ready in time to was almost impossible because we're still working on stuff at the end of last week. But so we have established the new boundaries with dispatch. And so in the south, the boundaries will be highway highway thirty-five at Monk Road and County Road one twenty-one at County Road forty-nine. So anything north of that will be the patient will be transported to Halliburton. Any patient south of that, they will end up going to Lindsay, and there could be some in the scattered areas, which are really in some cases, but in the northern and western borders, it's Black River Road and in the north, highway thirty-five and Sherburne Road. So anything south or east of those locations will come to Halliburton, west and north will go to either Braybridge or Huntsville. They're very few and far between calls. There's not a large percentage of them. But you'll note that we sort of tried to establish how many calls, and and again, this is we're just we're trying to make our best guess, but dispatch identified about thirty-eight calls so far this year. So that could end up being approximately a hundred calls that would normally have been transported probably to Minden, but now we'll end up going to Lindsay. So will we do all of those calls? It may work to our advantage in some ways and to our disadvantage in other ways. If we respond to those calls, then we would be transporting those patients to Lindsay. Where we could see offload delays, Lindsay City Corral Lakes sees average of forty-minute offload delays at the Ross Memorial Hospital, and thirty-six percent of the time they're over one hour. And we could also get assigned a call returning after we transfer care of that patient in Lindsay. On the flip side, though, is some of those calls could or possibly will be serviced by the city of Corral Lakes. And those calls would name maybe have come up to Minden in the past, but now they'll go to Ross Memorial Hospital, and when they came to Minden, often our service ended up transferring them back down to Lindsay or for whatever, for a CAT scan or something. So we're going to have to, it's one of those ones, we're just going to have to see how it works and 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 see where we go. As for upstaffing, as of midnight on May thirty-first, the Minnan Emergency Department is no longer taking any more patients. So we have an ambulance, an extra ambulance staff that night. And we're going to keep it over at the Minnan Emergency Department as often as we can, unless it gets assigned for a high priority call that it's closest to. And it'll be there till nine in the morning, and we have a second ambulance coming in at nine in the morning to go till nine at night on June the first. And we have the similar on June second, third, and fourth, a day shift of nine A M to nine P M. And HHS is asking if we may be able, even this is after I wrote this, changing if we might be able to stop some of those night shifts as well in the weekend, which we are working on. But again, it all has to do with staff, and can we get them? Transfers. We've sort of looked at it and determined that the the single site is probably going to be very advantageous for us as far as transfers. Because now the physicians are all at one site. They're able to better prioritize which patient needs to go first and allowing us to keep a more balanced nine-one-one coverage. Because in the past, the both sites didn't communicate. So Minden may send out two transfers, and the Halliburton calls for a transfer. And so we have multiple transfers going on that not both sites knew about. Now, they will understand better that this is how many ambulances we have. This is how many we can send out of the area at a time, and they can better prioritize that at the one site. So I see that as a bit of an advantage. The last thing is, I presently have a meeting scheduled with the Ministry of Health for tomorrow to just discuss the possibility of some additional funding for us to maintain some upstaffing.
Questions? Hearing none. Thanks very much, Tim. Just hope that this you know, you don't run into any more challenges than necessary, and that you can, you know, handle the handle the change well, and I'm sure you'll all do your best. Right on. Okay, next on the agenda are reports in minutes from external boards and agencies.
Resolution to receive that verbal report.
I'm sorry. Yes, please. Move her in a second or to receive that report, councillors Carter and Burton.
Move by councillor Carter, second by councillor Burton, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the verbal update from the chief director of the Halliburton County Paramedic Service regarding the consolidation plans for HHS emergency departments and their related impacts on the paramedic service.
All in favor? That's carried. Now, reports in minutes from external boards and agencies, starting with the Halliburton Worth of Pine Ridge Health Unit, councillor Ryle. Any highlights that you'd wish to provide?
But there's two attachments which cover mostly the detail. There's a few things that we might find of value, but obviously, as COVID starts come on the day of the P P R is more production priorities. Sorry about that. The the ones that have now come to the forefront are healthy babies, healthy children, first-time mother support, intimate partner violence, school health. They're also going to be getting involved with Bill ninety-seven. Looking at healthy home development and planning and the opiate crisis. That's that's a good thing, but it also could have a negative impact, and that impact could be that in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three, there was significant amount of money that were given to the health unit specifically for COVID nineteen. In twenty-one, it was over a million. In twenty-two, it was over three million. And in twenty twenty-three, it was over two million as well. So as the items that are specifically isolated to COVID are removed, there's a negative, no change. Things just don't 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 make any difference. But over the three years they've been doing it, they've been able to take advantage of better processes. And so consequently, now some of the processes that are going to be impacted for financing will not be eliminated because just eliminating the COVID doesn't necessarily mean the process. Most of them are related to logistics and administration. So as the COVID items are removed, the staff is reorganizing what they have and then determining what the impact cost will be over the twenty twenty-four budget. So at this point in time, they don't know, but they're hoping by the time we get to the fourth quarter of a better idea of what that impact will be, if any, on the twenty twenty-four budget. There was also a significant presentation by Sue Chikazi dealing with the climate impact on health conditions. She dealt with things like extreme temperature fluctuations on the age in the vulnerable populations, vector borne diseases caused by you know, increased insects, numbers and varieties, contaminated food and water sources due to just the way that the temperatures and climate are changing, declining air quality and increased solar ultraviolet radiation exposures and and intensity and what that causes. Examples would be skin cancer and those kind of things that really get impacted. And then last but not least, we had a great discussion here about committee of the whole and how we're going to be looking at it. And we had the same conversation at the HKPR as to whether we would have new new two new committees established. One was to be the governance committee, and the other one was a finance and audit committee. And I could almost use the conversations that we had here as what we discussed there. One, it was too many, too hard for staff to have two different two new committees. Two, the timing that was going to be required to to run all that and the logistics of it just 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 didn't make it possible. So the compromise that was made and is going to be used for the rest of this year, ending in shape and reviewed in December of twenty twenty-three is on the agenda. There is a thing called business from board members. And there is also new business. And between the two of those council members, elected council members are to bring forward from their councils any information that they would like to share with the health unit and or any questions that they would like answered by the health unit. And the idea would be is that they would be discussed at the particular meeting where they're brought forward. And in the event that the decision is made by the group at that time, that there's not a significant amount of time to deal with it effectively, then it would be rescheduled for the following meeting, at which point in time time would be allocated. In other words, taking the meeting beyond where it's normal time, because it's about two-hour time in it. But if we had to go to a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour, three-hour, four-hour, whatever it took to deal with that particular issue would be there. And the same thing would go with relation to staff. Obviously, they would not be using the the input from the council from from the, but there's under new business, they would be bringing things forward that they would like the board to look at and possibly the individual municipalities that the board represents. So that's kind of sort of the 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 overall positioning of of what they're going to do with those two. So the two committees are not going to happen. But this is something that's going to be tested similar to what we're we were talking, we're doing here for the remainder of twenty twenty-three. And last but not least, there was also orientation training for for me, and there's a new staff member, Matthew Roerman. I don't get his name right. He's the new director of corporate services for the health unit. We had the meeting on Thursday. He had been a member of the staff for two days. So we kind of went through a whole series of 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 stuff that 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 came forward, and I I just found it to be a very productive product of the
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Ryle, councillor Perry?
Well, you're not going to probably like this question, but I always get worried when you take on a new project and you hire other people, and you take the project away, and you still keep the people. So is anybody from from the elected people on that committee to make those choices, or is that strictly staff doing that?
It's as far as I understand, it is purely a staff issue. It is something that the Dr. Mocking looks into very carefully, does the loading of that particular thing. Obviously, it has to come before the board for approval, at which point in time now we go back into if there are questions that that we would be able to present them there. And his summer report will be will be put forward as to what the impact will be.
Okay, thank you. I hope.
Any other questions for councillor Ryle? And next is point in time. I see you have a set of minutes there.
Yeah, thank you. The strategic planning process is underway with a draft to be presented at the annual meeting on June the twentieth. And they have returning staff back for the summer, and then they'll be returning to the university in the fall. And they're in the process of trying to recruit for some for for summer programs. And they're big news. They're hoping to move all Halliburton buildings into one site while maintaining them in the knots. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, next is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, which I attended last week, I think. One of the big items that was under discussion there was, as if we haven't talked enough about paramedic services, was a was a final report on paramedic service in Eastern Ontario and how that's sparing. And and I've got to say that that all of the paramedic chiefs across Eastern Ontario were were involved in in the information that was included in the report and and appreciation to all of them for the work that they've done. And and what what the report is doing is assisting all of us with five-year forecasts. There was a a report included as part of that on cross-country or cross cross-country, cross-border activity. Also, a number of of priority recommendations for the E O W C. I'm just to note that the the report didn't extend to the city of Ottawa with respect to cross-border activity. A lot of this information is is not new to us, but there has been an eighteen percent increase in in volume, call volumes. But at the same time, a service service performance decline. Response times have increased by fourteen percent. There there's been a reduction in performance primarily due to the offload delays that we hear quite a bit about. The number of offloads have increased by a hundred and sixty-one percent, which is pretty considerable across across Eastern Ontario. The current workloads, what what the report says, that the current workloads are not sustainable, that there's increased overtime, increased costs, and it's causing fatigue and stress, reduce morale in in a lot of the services. And I should say clearly that Halliburton County is in much better condition than a lot of the paramedic services in in Eastern Ontario. So kudos to the work that they do. I mean, we're having the same challenges, but not to the extent that some of the other services are having, which which I was very happy to hear. Similar challenges with the community paramedicine programs across Eastern Ontario. You know, they're they're having some challenges filling shifts which unfortunately results in having to return funding that's been provided, which is always unfortunate. There was a huge acknowledgement that community, the community paramedicine program is very well received. And it's it's a lot of help overall for the for the healthcare services in general. It's reducing nine-one-one calls. And there there were the calls went from two hundred and forty-seven thousand calls to two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Now, those are still big numbers, but it's a significant reduction. The recommendations that came out of the report were that often the the issue of offload delays needs to be resolved. That the community paramedicine programs Um, that the, uh, community paramedicine programs needs a, a, a permanent or a, a commitment. Uh, for permanent and predictable funding from the province. Um, that right now, I guess there's a number of different streams of funding and that, that, you know, that, that needs to be resolved. And that there is a reluctance, uh, in being able to hire community paramedics. Uh, be, you know, until this commitment is made. Dispatch needs to be modernized, uh, for both nine one one. And, uh, community paramedicine. And enrollment needs to be increased in community college paramedics. In the. Community college paramedics program. One thing that was noted is that there is, uh, some, some of the services do have. A staff psychologist on retainer to, to assist some of the paramedics who are having some mental health challenges. And there is considerable work being done with the province with respect to, well, I mentioned the, the cross border challenges that we're having. Uh, that was really the basic, uh, the. One of the largest presentations and took up quite a bit of the time at the meeting. And we did talk about, um, delegations at AMO and, and what delegations we would be making. Interestingly enough, there are no more multi minister delegations. It just, you know, to have that many ministers together, only to hear about two or three particular priorities was deemed to be a bit of a, a waste of time. Um, they're looking for a different method of presentations being made. You know, it's kind of wrote that it's in, you know, it's all written down in red and, you know, it, it, they've received it in advance. So. There will be specific, um. Delegations made with respect to housing, long-term care and the paramedic service. Um, and there's been specific members of the, uh, of the caucus assigned to do those. Um, and there, there will be some smaller delegations, of course, that, I mean, everybody has their individual delegations. Um, one of the things that we'd like to sort of stitch together is that there's a. Sort of a fiscal responsibility aspect to all of the concerns that we've got and that, that kind of needs to be. Stitched together. Um, there was, um, there were a number of other small items that were. Discussed. But one of the things that I found, um. Really interesting was that the, uh, township of Prescott Russell. Um, is going to be successful or are successful in, in attracting a new. Uh, new firm. Uh, called New Build Robotics. And they're building prefabricated units and, and they're, they're stackable. And, and it's absolutely, you know, if, if you, uh, Google New Bill Robotics. You'll, you'll just see some absolutely extraordinary developments and, and I think in, in Peterborough behind the courthouse. They're building a thirty story unit. Out of these. Prefabricated and they're, they're fabricated within a building, transported and stacked. And it's, it's, uh, you know, it can be used in a number of variety of ways from single units to, you know, just, they don't all have to be, you know. Huge units like that, but can be used in a variety of ways and, and they're affordable and they're net zero homes. Um, so something that, that, you know, when we get into, uh, greater discussions about housing, I think is, uh, uh, really exciting. I did, I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, I, you know, it's really unfortunate that Prescott. Prescott Russell, although they had this. Terrific piece of news and announcement to make. They had, uh. The day before our meeting had an incident in their community and, and, uh. There was a police officer shot and two police officers wounded. So you just, uh. Hate to see that those sorts of things are, are becoming more. Common these days and, uh. Times are changing. Anyway, any, uh, questions about that? Um, next is the Halliburton Joint Social Housing. Anything to report?
Uh, the next meetings are on June the seventh. So there's nothing to report right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, under professional recruitment, uh, nothing really to report other than a reminder that this evening is the. Physicians of Physician Appreciation Evening at Hookline and Sinker and all are welcome to attend. Anything on the library board, Council Shell?
Yes, um, first of all, we want to acknowledge that over seventeen hundred dollars has been donated to the Halliburton County Public Library in memory of Tim Casey, who was. Um, a courier and then sat on the board, unfortunately for a short time. That was twenty six families and individuals that sent cards or letters along with a contribution. Um, the summer reading program is starting on June seventeen and that's the first date that kids can go in and pick up their reading records. And a future save the date announcement was for the Friends of the Library fundraiser gala, which is on Sunday, October twenty second. With Maureen Jennings being the headline author. And then you have some minutes before you with anything else that you might be interested in.
Thank you. Any questions on the library work, Council Carter?
Sorry, I jumped, I jumped ahead. I was. My question is after the library.
Okay, um, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the reports in minutes? Counselor Shell and Grail.
Moved by Counselor Shell, second by Counselor Ryle, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the following. The April twentieth, two thousand twenty three Halliburton Board, the Pine Ridge District Health and Board of Health approved minutes and the HKPR Board of Health summary report for May two thousand twenty three. The March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three approved board minutes from points in time center for children, youth and parents. And the April twelfth approved minutes and the May tenth draft minutes from the Halliburton County Public Library Board.
All in favor? That's carried. Council Carter, you have a question?
I did. Uh, I was just wondering if we should add CPAC to the standing list of, uh.
Well, it's interesting that you would ask that because I, uh, I, I thought about that myself and I was looking at the agenda. Um, I guess that that's councils, um. You know, at councils discretion, the only thing is that, that county council. Doesn't pay for police services. And so that's why it's always, the reports have been made at the lower tier, but if council is interested in hearing that. Report here, I guess we could do that. It means we need to change the, uh, the format of the agenda, but that's.
Sounds like we might be anyway. I mean, it sounds like we might be anyway, if we change that.
There you go. Council Ray?
I, I think it would be good. It'd be wholesome for all of county and, uh, county council and, and everyone else. That's, uh. That's listening in to us today that, uh. To know where we are and all I know is heads of council. And the decisions are probably made at the lower levels. But it's general information that's just good to have. And, and I think it should be shared. So. I'm, I'm okay with, with, with adding it to our agenda.
Council Britton, you're the one who has to make the reports.
And I am as well, and I, I may suggest, I don't, and maybe you might can answer this for me. Would it fit in under item H?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Because what I would suggest and is take, uh, probably take good roads out of there. I'm not getting much information from them right now because I'm not on the board any longer. And we, we could stick it in there.
Great. That's unnoted. Um, next is the land division activity report. Um, on. Mr. Stone is not here to provide that report, um, but I, I guess I would just ask if there are any questions about the report. Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the land division? Activity report, Council Fury. Second way, Council Rail.
Moved by Counselor Fury, second by Counselor Ryle, be resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report, PLN thirty five dash two thousand twenty three entitled Land Division Activity Report. For May two thousand twenty three for information.
All in favor? That's carried. Under other external boards and agencies, I gather then that you have nothing to report on Good Road. And, uh, um, Yorn has not met since our last meeting, so, uh, I, I did report at the last meeting. Uh, is there anything on poverty reduction round table? None? Okay, under other business, um, we have, uh. An opportunity now to suggest whether or not we wish to make a delegation at AMO. About anything at all. Comments, suggestions, Council Carter?
Really just a question, what's the deadline?
Look to Michelle, I, my recollection is. Yeah. So before our next meeting.
So we would need to decide. Today. I would suggest we possibly may, maybe need to do a delegation with the Ministry of Health. See if we can get some assistance in, in funding for. The things that, the problem is that we need to have a package prepared on that and. That might be a bit of a challenge.
I, I, I think because. By the middle of August, what it looks like in the middle of August, it may be very different from what it looks like today. So preparing. Preparing a package ahead of time, it may be something that. You know. Would totally change.
Having said that, though, you see that that's something that we should be doing.
It'd be nice to have it as a placeholder.
Yeah. That's kind of what my thinking was too. Any other items that we wish to, uh, to address as a delegation?
Um. I was wondering about, uh. I don't know exactly how to put it, but it would be more in, and it may be something that's done at the, the wardens caucus level, the whole thing on. The housing and this, uh, this, uh, this. Presentation that we received a month or so ago, um, you know, of something to be. In support of that or. You know.
Seven and seven. I, I, you know, I think. E O W C will certainly be doing a presentation on it and giving an update.
But I don't know if there's some way that we could. You know. Sort of show our support for it in some way and, uh. Again, I don't know exactly how we've been.
Well, you know, I, I would suggest that that would be done through correspondence likely as opposed to a delegation. And, and we will have lots of opportunity to support that. They will be coming back to us with. You know, some more detailed reports and information.
This is just so damn important, you know, that it's, uh. Of, of trying to make sure that everyone. Like the minister is getting it from everybody that. I'm sure they already are, but you know, just. The fact is, is that. You know, we, housing right now takes three or four years. From the, you know, the idea to when it's actually built and ready. And so anytime that's lost this. Is just, you know, puts it further and further away. And then, you know, we have people phoning us. Yeah, your phone calls yesterday from people who are. Who, who are about to be homeless. And it's, uh, it's, it's really sad because there's. Yeah, there's nowhere to send them. There's nowhere.
I was just sorry, I should cast the fairy. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her yet.
Okay, well, I just don't understand this. We got forty thousand people coming to Ontario. Every month. New people. We have no housing and we have no healthcare. So I know that's a delegation, but somebody should wake up. I would think that's not a recipe for success.
And I'm not sure it's up to us to make that. Um, the, the only other issue that we had talked about, um, in. In previous discussions, when we looked at delegations was the issue of. Uh, we all have crown land issues. And, and how we go about resolving those crown land issues. Now, I know that there's an awful lot of them that, that are in Algonquin Islands. But I think that we're not alone. Um, in, in having things like ducks and landings or, or, you know, roads that are crossing ground lands. Or, or partially crossing crown lands that, uh. You know, that there are, I, I, I know lots of issues that we've got and I don't know if other municipalities have similar crown land issues, but. Uh, I would like to see a, a delegation made to the Minister of. Uh, natural resources, uh, with respect to. Looking at some method of resolving that in, in some fairly streamlined way as opposed to having to take each piece individually and. You know, applying for land use permits or, or, you know, there, there's got to be an easier way to go about this and, and resolve some of these issues that we got without great cost. And well, that could be consolidated in, uh, if, if no one could hear Counselor Dayo, she's. Talking about use of firearms on crown land, that there's been a considerable number of issues again in Algonquin Islands about that. Whether that could be consolidated in with that same delegation. I, I think it could be a, a dual issue, Counselor Carter, then Counselor Ray.
Cause on the firearms, we in Minden, uh, with the, uh, have also had that, that issue with the Queen Elizabeth. Uh, park. I mean, we have people in there with automatic weapons. You know, basically. Chopping down trees with automatic weapons. I mean, this is, uh. It's, it's not a, not a fun situ- situation. But the second part to the, to that or third part, wherever we are on now is the, so last week in Minden. We had three fires, three brush fires on the same day. In one case, um. One case, I think a tree came down and it, uh, it hit hydro lines. The next case, we lost the cottage or cottage and a half. Just here on Canning Lake. And then the third one. Uh, was, uh, down in the south end of the township where water bombers had to come in. And the issue with, uh, so. If we take that we're, you know, potentially going to have more of these types of brush fires and so on, caused by. Whatever lightning fireworks, people burning, whatever that is. The cost of. The response from MNRF, even if you do sign up. The, uh, to their programs to cooperate with them. I mean, these water bombers or whatever. Eight thousand dollars an hour or so and, uh. You know, some municipalities are getting hit with, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Charges. So the, if we're gonna, if this is going to happen more frequently. And we've got to find a way to work out some. You know, some. Equitable, uh, solution because there's a lot of places in, in Halliburton County. That may be on crown land or not on crown land, but are really inaccessible to our, our firefighters. And, you know, we have to really decide. What to do. And I hate to be in a situation where, you know, we have to make a decision of saying, well, let it burn. It may burn some. Some cottages down, but we don't have the money to. You know. Really invest in fighting it. I, I, I. Badly worded, but you know, you know what I'm saying? The, you know, cost becomes an issue. When we start, uh, talking about this type of thing. So the whole. The crown lands, like the firearms, the fires, that, that all. It all somehow fits together, I think.
Well, I, I, I see the, the issue that you're talking about as being very absolutely worthy of a delegation, but I. I'm not sure that it fits in quite as well. I think like that's another much bigger, um, subject.
It's just, it's MNRF.
And, and finance. Yeah, I know. Uh, Council Ray?
I'm, I'm not sure what I'm about to ask is going to fit into that same category either, but. You know, we were talking about how to regulate. I, I don't know what other words to use, but to get some kind of control over what the hell's going on on crown land. Uh, and, and getting, uh, some, some buy-in from the province, that that's something that needs or should be done either by them or by somebody. Uh, but then what about the opportunity to? To get crown land for the purposes of affordable housing? Is that something that, that we would be looking? At in what you're talking about, or would that be a separate issue? Or procurement of, of crown land with exclusive use? Or for affordable housing?
Is, is that not something that's included in, in a new proposed bill where we're allowed to? We're, we're allowed to extend our settlement boundaries in order to accommodate housing. Projects that I would think that that would.
On crown land?
Yes. Well. Yeah. Council Shell?
Uh, just quickly, Benin Hills actually, um. Had a delegation at Roma at the end of January twenty twenty with the minister regarding the QE two. And he was fully prepared to come up here. Check out the whole park, well, maybe not the whole park, but the park where we're having most issues. And of course, then COVID happened. So it, it has been put on the radar before, so perhaps. I'm not sure who the minister was at the day. I want to think his name was Jeff, but it's, it's not coming to me right now, but was it? I'm not sure who the minister was at the day. I want to think his name was Jeff, but it's not coming to me right now, but was it Jeff? Anyway. He was more than willing to come up and then COVID happened, so it just didn't happen, but perhaps it's time to bring it back to the. To the forefront.
So we need a delegation with M N R F. Do you see two separate delegations or or one? I'm I I I'm sort of thinking two, but uh it is simply because I think that there's a uh that the land acquisition aspect of things. Is is, you know, what what we might be looking at for. For a lot of the Crown Land issues, how we acquire that Crown Land and and the issue of firefighting. Uh, and and recovery of costs for that or reduction of costs, or, you know, however we look at that as being a separate delegation. Um, but, you know, looking for input from others. You and I can go back and forth, but we need to hear from. Go ahead.
M N R F was um is involved with certainly with us and the whole county on the fishery. You know, this whole idea of of the of the golden trout. And how they they pulled back from their support of it. And uh. So it's it's. It's a big, it's a big local issue. And again, it's M N R F.
Um, what are your thoughts about, you know, multiple topics that had a single delegate delegation? What's your experience with that?
Um, I don't really have any experience with that. Typically, we go in with one item and and so I'm not sure. I'm I'm trying to remember the the actual delegation request form and whether it gives an opportunity to say issue, issue, and it may. For different issues. The only. You know, for what it's worth, it just advice if nothing else. My experience has been that they really want a very definitive question. They or or a request like a very, very specific request. They they just don't respond well to, you know, can we have a conversation about? If they want you to say, here's what we're asking for. In those delegations, that that's just my experience. I imagine councillor Fury has a similar one. Um, all of you.
And and I think there's there's my hesitation about, you know, having, you know, like now we're at four. And I, you know, I was concerned about, wonder if we could sneak the two into to one, but. So. Councillor Rowell.
My personal thoughts are that I think the lead acquisition for affordable housing is a separate issue all by itself, and. I want to muddy the water with other things like firearms and so on and so forth. Not that they're not important, but I think it makes sense to put those, at least. Anything related to the firearms and that kind of stuff. In one. Whereas those related to to to. Purchasing the property for whatever reason we want to use for 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 the common good of all of our people. Is a separate issue. I that's just just my interpretation.
Councillor Burton.
Uh, getting back to the firearms issue or problem. I'm pretty sure that we had a delegation last year or the year before. I think Brent and Carol.
They did.
Uh, went. I don't know. Was there any outcome from that?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
But I. I would think that you should would have to break it down to answer your question probably to two meetings. Yeah, to Mike's point.
At least, and and I I truly believe that this new bill coming out will. Deal with the concern that you've got councillor Rowell about uh our ability to expand our settlement boundaries. Um, any other delegate thoughts on delegations? So we're. Councillor Dayu. Okay, hang on. Not that I'd like to check my email during a council meeting, but this is a little extraordinary. Two outstanding delegations today. Okay, um councillor Dayu is suggesting uh two topics, how recreational use of Crown Land is regulated. And water bomber costs is climate adaptation issue as well as a fiscal issue. So I'm I'm not sure how. Definitely the issue about water bomber costs and and that that could be a suggestion about, you know, where where that fits into. So we've agreed that we need to do a delegation about that. Um, I'm I'm wondering if Algonquin Highlands might want to do a separate delegation on recreational use of Crown Land, and that would. You know, take the number of delegations coming from the county level down. That would that work councillor Burton?
Uh, I'm not sure if we should just stop with the with the water bombers. I think the whole uh. Fire agreement or the um contract, whatever you call it, we have. It is troublesome, and I've heard of municipality, Bob said that. Have been hit with a a three hundred thousand dollar bill from uh from the water bombers coming in. But I certainly wouldn't mind looking at the whole agreement. If if they would. Okay, because it kind of sits out there and and a lot of us aren't a hundred percent sure how it works. A few years ago, uh, I I know the Wardens Caucus, they were, uh, we had a couple delegations uh with the M and R and F, I guess at that time. And it was uh it was compensation for Crown Land that we were after in those days, and it was a priority for us to try to get to get something out there. Didn't we weren't too successful with it, but it was one of the top priorities for us.
Yeah, my my faith in the success of delegations is not. Councillor Carter.
If uh Minden Hills would go in with Algonquin Highlands on that, uh, the the concept of talking about the firearms and and the. And and Crown Land. Because we, you know, we we share. Similar situations, so we we'd be willing to go in with you if we didn't, if we were making it a municipal as opposed to a.
County.
The county.
Okay. Well, and we can speak to the fact that it's something that is experienced across the county, but. Councillor Burton.
And uh, I believe Highlands East would be as well, and and there's a couple of reasons why, but the mainland is because we're. Uh, starting out with a a Trails Master Plan, and we're going to be using a fair bit of Crown Land, and I. Certainly take part.
Okay.
Would would council be because it's three local municipalities making that request? I I guess my question is, would we did a delegation request? I just looked it up. Did did you want me to share those materials with you? The the actual.
Absolutely.
Presentation that we made. It may be a good starting point for your conversation. It's five pages.
Okay, anything else under delegations? Could I then have a mover in a second or two move forward with those? Councillor Shell, councillor Carter.
So. Uh, so where did we land? So we have. Ministry of Health. A placeholder on sort of. A yeah, a placeholder on where where we stand, basically it did. I know we're a bit of a moving target, but I think that we're probably going to need to, you know, so funding support. Moving forward, so update on Triple H S.
Yeah.
Um, and then M N R F. The Crown Land issues you're going to do as as locals.
I well, I think that we can do a Crown Land delegation that's general in nature. That that, you know, because we have things like forest roads that that are being used as cottage roads and that they cross around to Crown Land that there's. That there's docks and landings that are on Crown Land that that the land itself or that where the landing is has not been turned over. In general, like, let's let's see if we can sort out a way to. To acquire Crown Land. Through some. Established process as opposed to piecemeal.
So Crown Land issues and acquisition.
And the other requests would come from the lower tiers.
Oh, the M N R F one. Yep. Okay. So that's not our request then. So the the Crown Land issues and acquisition is ours. The other one isn't the water bomber, like the M and R F firefighting agreements.
Well, no, I I sort of heard that the M and R F and the firefighting agreement, because it's something that all foreign municipalities have. We come from the county's level.
Okay, so.
But we'll deal with the firearms and the.
The Crown Land issues and acquisition local. The. The firefighting agreements.
No. Both of them at the county level.
Okay.
Acknowledging that they aren't county issues per se, but they are an issue that is that is experienced across the country. And we'll work out who's who's going to uh. Do the speaking of those and. Possibly there can be some cooperation between the C A Os.
So are you okay if I talk to your C A Os about that at our meeting, just to make sure that they're, because I won't have any information or supporting documentation at all? Absolutely. Okay. Moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor Carter, be resolved at Halliburton County Council, direct staff to request delegation meetings with the following provincial ministers, Minister of Health. Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry and Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry and with the two issues.
All in favor. Let's carry. Okay, next on the agenda is the deputy warden's election. Long last. Um, now, what what we had not been able to do in the past was allow each. Uh, of the people putting their name forward for deputy warden to speak. So we will offer that opportunity to you both now. Um, and I guess in. Alphabetical order, I can't think of any other another way to. To go about it, but. But who goes first? So. The floor is yours, councillor Burton.
I will be brief. Uh, just as a deputy warden, I'm I'm very willing and able. Available to to help and support. The warden, not only the warden, but all of county council at all times, and I'll certainly act in a fair, professional. Um, way or manner uh when called upon by the warden. Thank you.
Councillor Carter.
So I. I I plan to stand for warden at some point during the course of this term, and so I would. You know. I don't want to say this is part of my learning process, but I I see this as a as a step. Um, to getting more involved with the the issues that the warden is involved with. I'm. Originally had become a councillor to motivated by two areas. One was. Um, housing and the the other area was really the protection of our lakes and 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 so on. Uh, since then, you know, I quickly realized that money became an issue, and so the financial management is, uh. You know, I have a good understanding of it, and it's something that is is very important to me. And making sure that we spend our money prudently, and we are always remembering that it's not our money. And it's the taxpayers' money. And then the the next issue that I. You know, I didn't think that I really have to become involved with this healthcare. Um, and that's a big issue for us, and and it's an area that I, again, am very, very interested in. Uh, so. I think that those are the things that that I I most care about. Uh, it's sort of a good, all part of an idea of good government and good governance. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, gentlemen. I I guess we're ready for ballots.
So I guess I'll I'll just go over the process as like one little wood. Not normally this one would do this process, so I that I I think so in respect of the election.
Mark played on his feet.
I tell you, he runs fast. Um, so all members present shall vote. Each member of council has one vote. Uh, voting shall proceed by way of secret ballot. I'll provide, uh, we'll we'll actually recess as we did uh in in December, November, when we elected the warden. We'll recess. Uh, we'll ask every member of council to come individually. You'll be handed a ballot with both names on it and and. You can cast those ballots in secret. Um, we'll, Michelle and I will then, you're you're welcome to to scrutineer. Uh, but uh, Michelle and I will count the ballots, and then I will come in and announce the results. In the case of an equality of votes, the clerk shall place the names of the candidates on equal sized pieces of paper in a box, and one name shall be drawn by the county clerk. So any questions about the process? Hearing none, we will, Michelle will go to the tourism manager's office and start. Uh, get get prepared with the ballots, and then we can. We can recess.
Well, then we will call a brief recess. Welcome back. Uh, so I I would like to thank both gentlemen for putting their names forward as candidates for deputy warden, and I am pleased to announce that the successful candidate is councillor Burton. So congratulations councillor Burton, and could I have a mover in a second or two? To resolve that councillor Burton be the deputy warden. Councillor or councillor Rowell, councillor McKetney. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor McKetney, be resolved at Halliburton County Council, elect councillor Dave Burton as deputy warden of the Corporation of the County of Halliburton. Uh, effective until December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and that staff be directed to destroy the paper election ballots for the two thousand twenty-three deputy wardens election.
All in favor. That's carried. So you. Yeah. Um, could I now have a mover in a second or to go into closed session? Councillor Rowell, councillor McKetney.
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor McKetney, be resolved at Halliburton County Council entering the closed session for the following reasons: the security of the property of the municipality or local board.
All in favor. That's carried. Uh, welcome back. Um, nothing left on the agenda now, but the bylaws. Uh, the first being the bylaw to appoint the Secretary Treasurer and Deputy Secretary Treasurer of the Land Division. I have a mover in a second or for that. Councillors Shell and Fury.
Moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor Ferry, be resolved that bylaw four one eight zero being a bylaw to appoint the Secretary Treasurer and the Deputy Secretary Treasurer of Land Division Committee for the County of Halliburton. Be considered to be read a first, second, third time. be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the next is to appoint a public member to the Land Division. Could I have a mover in a second or sorry? Counselors Dayan Burton.
Move by Counselor Dayu, second by Counselor Burton, be a result that bylaw four one eight one being a bylaw to appoint public members to the Land Division Committee for the Corporation of the County of Halliburton be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and the seal the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the next is to amend a bylaw to allow the appointment of a member to the library board. Could I have a mover in a second or please? Counselor McKetney. Counselor Dayu.
Move by Counselor McKetney, second by Counselor Dayu, be resolved that bylaw four one eight two being a bylaw to amend bylaw four one three eight respecting the appointment of members of council and public representatives of the Corporation of the County of Halliburton and to appoint members of council as representatives of the Corporation of the County of Halliburton to external boards and organizations be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is to appoint a member of council and a public representative to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee. I have a mover in a second or Counselor Carter? Counselor Ray.
Moved by Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Ryle, be it resolved that bylaw four one eight three being a bylaw to appoint members of council and public representatives from various agencies and organizations to the county's community safety and wellbeing advisory committee be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and the seal the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, the uh bylaw to appoint deputy clerk. But I have a mover in a second or Mr. Dayu, Counselor Burton.
Moved by Counselor Dayu, second by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that bylaw four one eight four being a bylaw to appoint Sarah Hume as a deputy clerk for the Corporation of the County of Halliburton be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and the seal the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of motion? Um, hearing none, um, could I have a mover in a second or for the confirming bylaw? Counselor Rail, second by Counselor Dayu.
Moved by Counselor Ryle, second by Counselor Dayu, be it resolved that bylaw four one eight five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three special meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and the seal the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, a motion to adjourn. Counselor McKetney, Counselor Ray. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McKetney, second by Counselor Ryle, be resolved that the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor?